Call to order, the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting, June 20th, 2017, 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation done by Sister Lorraine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Katz.
Dear God, we praise and thank you for all of your tremendous gifts to us. We can't help but ask for more. We ask you for our world, that there will be an end to war, an end to terrorism. We ask you for our beloved country, that our congresspersons will make very important, wise decisions. And we ask you for our help here in the city of Boynton Beach, to continue to bless the wondrous activities of our city commission, especially as they're looking to the future with our new city, town, center. And we pray for all the citizens, the diverse citizens of this city. Give them all that they need at this time and into the future. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And Commissioner Joe Casello.
I was informed that Commissioner Casello is not feeling well, and he is hopefully getting better at home.
There's a quorum.
Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I've got, uh, thank you. Three items to add to future agenda items at the will of the commission. One is to discuss FLSC, LLC textiles. They are a clothing collection company like the containers you see out at shopping centers. They're looking to present some information to us and some possibilities for us moving forward. And then two other items for future...
What was those initiatives again? FL what?
FLSC.
Thank you.
And two other items of discussion, just two parcels of land that have been brought to my attention that the city owns, and maybe we want to do something about each of these. One of them is a plot just east of Boynton Beach, Leisureville. That's something that we could potentially dispose of and make some money for the city and see some new housing over there. And then the other one is a parcel behind Chapel Hill, I believe. It's referred to as Girl Scout Park because it used to be kind of earmarked for Girl Scout activities, I think, decades ago. It's a piece of land that's deed restricted by the county that we were given, so there's potential there maybe to place a park to make use of that land. So those three items under future agenda items for presentation by staff and that textile company next time.
Vice Mayor, when I was on the Financial Advisory Committee, we did make some recommendations. We'll see if, I'll see if I can find those regarding those two parcels. And then also I'd like to put up also on future agenda items, the traveling sauna that we heard at the CRA meeting, so that the city and the CRA can work together in getting that to Boynton Beach.
So moved as a minute.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, agenda approved. Commissioner Romulus, would you like to begin?
Yes.
Information items. Good afternoon, everyone. So we are having a lot of feedbacks.
Yeah, what is the feedback?
Thank you.
I'm on call, but I got a device.
All right.
Making it go off.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to see some of our elected officials here with us tonight, who will be presenting to the public their work up in Tallahassee and around our illustrious county. Some of the things I did throughout the past couple of days, I attended a citizenship party that was hosted by the Women's Circle congratulating some women who recently attained or the United States citizenship. One of the main things I told them is make sure they go register to vote, especially being that they are in District 3. Next, I also sat down with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council regarding some changes to the US-1 corridors, some plans they have for traffic changes in the upcoming future. I also attended an event called, hosted by AAUW, and this was the Tech Trek Professional Women's Dinner. And this is a week-long summer camp for seventh grade girls that allows them to be introduced to careers in STEM technology. So for those who don't know what STEM is, that is science, technology, engineering, and math. So a lot of girls usually around that age, around that time in their life, they will veer from those career paths because they feel like, as a girl, then that they're not worthy, or they don't really need to be in there. And this is a way to really help bring women back into those careers. So this was a great opportunity to meet with these young girls and really help them to see that they can have these opportunities for them in their lives. I also attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for Yoga Fit, and this is a new business here at the, One Boynton, I believe, is the new name of the complex where Los Ventanas used to be. So wish them great success in their business. And last but not least, even though it's a little belated, happy Father's Day to all of the fathers in the room, and father figures as well, who have stepped in for those children who aren't without fathers. So thank you for everything that you do.
On June 7th, I attended the reception for Coconut Dreams. They're still up on the second floor of the library. This is early 1900s pictures of the Boynton Beach and Ocean Ridge area. I attended the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce Governance Breakfast on June 8th. On June 9th, I went to Tivoli Lakes, I think, for the Fairchild Garden Million Orchid Project and worked with them to hopefully bring some more orchids into Boynton Beach. On June 12th, I went to the MPO Governance Meeting. Currently, the MPO is looking to go either to independent versus being run, being part of the county. And we're trying to figure out what is the best and what is most advantageous for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the organization that spends the gas tax dollars to help build roads and move people around. And then that evening, went to the Dalka of South Florida for Break the Fest for Ramadan. I met with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council regarding the US-1 study. I addressed some realtors at the Lennar Homes just outside of Boynton Beach. Went to the Chamber of Event Lunch and Learn at RM Logitech Presentation. June 15th, I attended the Florida League of Cities Institute of Civic Leadership. June 16th, went for the Legislative Policy Committee for Land Use and Economic Development. I think if anybody saw last, this year's legislative session knows, and we'll hear a little bit about it, knows that the municipalities are under attack from certain state legislators. And it seems that we need to work together with everyone from around the state with the municipalities, so that we do not lose our governance and home rule. And then I went to the School of Rock, the music that the CRA had. On June 17th, I attended the Palm Beach County Housing Authority Meeting to let them know that Boynton Beach is very interested in development on their property that they own, and informed them of the update for Ocean Breeze East. On June 18th, I just want to wish everyone again a happy Father's Day, and that is it for me.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. I met on June 13th, I met with Palm Beach MPO in regards to the US-1 corridor study. Will be an input as well as dialogue. Also met with Dr. Deborah Robinson in regards to things that was happening at the school board. Like to be the first one to announce that we do have a new principal at Boynton Beach Community High School. His name is Mr. Juan Sims. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I also met with Treasure Coast Regional Planning the other day, and that's it.
First announcement, budget workshops for the full year 2017-18 budget are scheduled in the library program room on the following dates and times. Monday, July 17th, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, at 10:00 AM. Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, at 2:00 PM. And Lori, do you mind telling us a little bit what's going to happen at 5:00 PM to start off the budget? What is going to happen when we start off the budget session at 5:00 PM?
On the first, our first workshop day?
Yes.
We typically, depending on the commission's desire, we'll typically have each of our department heads present all of their general fund departments. We'll talk general fund, then we'll get through utility fund, you know, order changes here and there. We discuss capital improvements. We'll be doing this over the three days. We will need to set a tentative, when it's all concluded, we'll need to have set a tentative mileage rate. And we'll be discussing fire assessment preliminary rate resolution as well, again. And we basically go through the whole budget book.
Okay. Now, but is there a specific, can you help present, have the present of the order that we are going through the different departments?
I can prepare the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we will typically, again, start with this, it depends. We'll do some smaller departments up front, then we get into the larger, but police, fire, all those.
Police, fire, and parks and rec, I think, are the most important.
That'll typically go first day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
And then it's, we'll definitely do that, and then it depends on how far we get as to what we go into on the second day.
Okay.
Lori, since we're discussing that, when can we expect to get a copy of the budget?
You'll get your budget, your proposed budget transmitted to you the week of July 4, as normal.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have announcements from Senator Jeff Clemmons and Representative Lori Berman. We'll provide an update of the recent legislative session.
Been tag teaming, so good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and residents of Boynton Beach. I'm Lori Berman. I represent District 90. I'm a state representative. I've been representing this area for the last five years, and before that, I represented parts of Boynton Beach for two years before that. So I'm going to focus exactly on what the mayor talked about, and that's the attack. And I always, when I do this review, I like to tell you about what we preempted in Tallahassee. And please excuse my voice, I have that summer cold that's going around, unfortunately, that so many people have. So this year was truly one of the greatest numbers of bills that preempted local government authority than in the seven years that I've been there, for sure. So I'll go through a couple of the different ones, so you'll be aware of them. With regard to charter schools, if a charter school comes in and opens up in certain specific facilities, including churches, theaters, or community centers, you are prohibited from filing any zoning or site plan approval. So they are allowed to come into any of those facilities. With regard, there was a construction bill, and it preempts local government regulations relating to the design, construction, or location of signage advertising of the retail price of gasoline. As part of that bill, there were some items regarding franchise signs also. So if you do anything regarding franchise signs, we need to look at that bill more closely. Drone, we, we in the state governed, decided that we're going to control all the drones, so we will preempt any legislation regarding drones. However, local governments do retain authority to enact and enforce local ordinances relating to nuisances, voyeurism, harassment, reckless endangerment, property damage, or other illegal acts from the drones. Uber and Lyft were both preempted also by the state, and actually, that one wasn't as terrible. We did need to set up a state framework, and we do, as part of it, have certain requirements about fingerprints and safety for Uber and Lyft. But now, all those transportation network services are regulated solely by the state. The last big bill that we passed about preemption had to do with what they call 5G. Oh, no, there's another, well, there's one other one after that, I'm sorry. But 5G, so right now, we all have our cell phones, and they're all 4G. The utilities are moving toward 5G, and they want to do it in a statewide manner. So a bill was passed, and it says that if they want to co-locate the wireless communication infrastructure on an existing pole, it has to be an existing pole, you're limited to collecting $150 in fees. And then the last bill I want to talk to you about is Public Works Projects Preemption. If you do a public works project and you take 50% of the money from the state government, you are not, you are restricted on any conditions that you can put on contractors and subcontractors. So you can't pay employees a predetermined wage rate, you can't provide a specific type of benefits, you can't, you can't limit the amount of staffing. So if you're doing a public works project, you are going to be very limited in how you are, the scope of it, if the state gives you more than 50% of the money. So those are the bad news bills for today. This is also our first wrap-up that we did after the special session. So now we, it was good because we waited for you a little bit, but now we saw the budget is all done. The Senate overrode some of the vetoes, and that helped our area. Two of them in particular helped FAU, one with their Tech Runway, and one with a program that they do with Max Planck, which is very much STEM-related. So those were some good things that happened. And also in the session, we did pass finally Medical Marijuana Framework for the sale of medical marijuana in the state. And it will be up to you to determine if you want dispensaries in your city. There is no preemption on that. The only requirement is that you can't treat them any differently than you would a facility that sells alcohol. Although the county can, well, they couldn't preempt you, so that's okay. So that is your determination if you decide you want dispensaries in your city. So now we will have, we do have the budget. It's 82 and a half billion dollars. And we did get some good things for Palm Beach County. We got, we got some facilities for our universities, we got some water projects, so we worked really hard. I did a project where we have for recidivism in the glades for people who are coming out of prison. We got $500,000 for that project. So we worked hard, but it was a really tough year for cities and counties. And unfortunately, I think it was a tough year for our schools, and you're going to hear from our school board member, and she's going to talk about that also, and give you a little bit of an update about it. So I wasn't thrilled with some of the things in the budget, but I'm glad we've wrapped it up finally after having to have a special session, and now we can move on and start looking ahead to next year. So thank you for the opportunity to represent all of you, and now my colleague, Senator Jeff Clemmons.
Thank you, Representative. Just because Representative Berman maybe skipped over it a little bit, we didn't vote for most of those things that you just heard her talk about. So I just wanted to make that real clear. Those were things that passed the legislature, but they didn't do so with our support. And so I'm a local government guy. I come from local government. I was the mayor of the city of Lake Worth before I went to Tallahassee, so I have no desire to go up there and force regulation down on local government, or preempt you from doing your own regulation. The idea that you shouldn't be able to require contractors on your projects to be local, or to hire local people, I think is, or to have minority hiring requirements, or any of those things, I think those are terrible ideas. And I think that's, it comes from a legislature that really has a deep distaste of local government, which is frustrating, because the truth of the matter is, is that most of the work that we get done, that people can see, is done by you all. And it's kind of a sliding scale. The county does a lot of work, the state does some work, and then Washington DC doesn't do any. So come on, that was a joke. Vote, you can laugh. What I spent most of, or maybe it's not a joke, correct. So what I spent most of the legislative session working on, we're trying to bring some dollars home. We did get a million dollars for some Lake Worth lagoon cleanup, which certainly will all benefit from. I did have $3 million worth of projects, economic development projects, that were vetoed by the governor. So that's a little bit of frustration from a governor who claims to be the economic development and jobs governor. But one place where I did have some luck is with legislation. I've been working on sober homes legislation now for four or five years, and we were finally able this year to pass what I consider to be some landmark legislation dealing with recovery residences, and how we're going to really go after some of the unethical marketing practices that, where people are dragging folks down here with free plane tickets and free rent into these recovery residences, and then they're not getting the things that they need out of those recovery residences. So making sure that we're treating the people with respect that are going into these facilities and, you know, treating the neighborhoods with respect as well. We'll now be able to use the statewide prosecutor to go after some of these folks. We were able to refund the sober homes, recovery residence task force, whatever they want to call it, in order to be able to continue to prosecute people who are doing bad things. And I think that's been a success here over the past year, so we're going to continue to fund that. And continue to fund now the registration of recovery residences as well. Wasn't really a companion bill, but something that was similar that I also passed, had to do with the waiting period that doctors have before they can report the opioid prescriptions that they're making. It used to be seven days they had to report, and what that resulted in was a lot of doctor shopping in our communities, especially here in Palm Beach County and in Broward. And now they only have 24 hours, so they have to report electronically, which I think is a much more efficient system. And now you can't go to one doctor one day, and then another the second day, and another the third day, stocking up in your opioids. But overall, it was a relatively frustrating legislative session. I guess that's nothing new. I was really disappointed what we did in the area of our public school funding, and I know that's not necessarily your bailiwick, except for Commissioner Katz, but it is, it's frustrating to know that we're still in the bottom 10% of the nation in per student funding, still in the bottom 10%, or really last in the nation in mental health funding. I could name about 20 different categories in which we're in the bottom 10% in the United States in terms of funding, and really to see a legislature that in my mind is anti-local government, and that frustrates me. So having said that, I think, you know, rather than taking more of your time, one of the things I wanted to mention, because we work so closely with them, and look, the truth of the matter is, you can only get up there once or twice during session. It's very difficult for you to get up there, but you have a gentleman that works for you with Ballard Partners, Matt Forrest, who is there every day, every night, every weekend that we need to be there, working on your behalf. And I work with a lot of lobbyists for local governments across the state, and there is none that's better than Matt. So I just want to assure you of that. You know, it was a bad year for local water projects, and I know we were frustrated that we weren't able to bring money home for Boynton Beach this year, but I can tell you, you're not alone. I don't know that brings you any comfort, it probably doesn't, but it is probably the most opaque part of the state budget, the water project budget. We all put in our requests, and then a day before the budget is passed, they're released. And we have no opportunity to change that list. It's really a bad, bad system, and one that certainly you could never get away with here in local government, because you have to have a much more open and transparent means of doing business. So it continues to be a frustration that I hope we can change up there, but I can promise you that Matt's working as hard as he can for you, and so are Representative Berman and myself. And I know Representative Jaquet couldn't be here tonight, but he's doing his best. And I worked very closely with Representative Hager on the sober homes legislation. Having said that, we're here to take any questions, if there's anything that's of concern to you. We will be going back earlier this year, so you'll see us back in Tallahassee for committee weeks as early as September. For those of you who don't know, your state legislature is a part-time legislature. We get paid $29,000 a year to represent you. So we're up there, probably anywhere from, with committee weeks, anywhere from four to five months out of the year, doing this job.
My quick question regarding the sober homes, or the recovery residents. With the Attorney General having control, is she going to make a determination if they are considered a rooming house for tourist developmental tax?
You know, that has not been in any way a part of her lexicon, but I think if that's something that is, that you all believe that you can use in order to help keep a lid on some of the bad operators, I would wholeheartedly encourage you, and if it's something you're interested in doing, I'll be glad to reach out to the Attorney General. But what I would ask is if you could put something in writing?
Absolutely.
And then I'll be glad to reach out to the Attorney General and see if that's something that's...
Okay, yeah, we'll find the county statute, or county ordinance, and bring that to you.
And Mayor, she did, she did hold a press conference in Tallahassee where she cited this legislation as something that she was excited about, was a priority for her, and so let's try.
All right, thank you.
We keep tossing around the words sober homes and group homes. What is the correct way so that we don't get in trouble, group homes?
So, no, I think the, sober homes has become the slang nomenclature, but the official term in state statute is recovery residence.
Thank you.
On a whole other topic, sitting as one of the board members of our Tourist Development Council, is there any work from the legislature to help with short-term housing in terms of like HomeAway and things like that, and trying to get taxation back to the cities and the counties to help offset some of the bed, you know?
Yeah, so you're talking about some of the...
Airbnb and things like that.
Sure. I will tell you, in my discussions with the people who represent Airbnb in Tallahassee, they don't have problem, they say they don't have a problem with taxation or regulation as long as it doesn't keep, as long as it doesn't ban them from doing business in certain communities. That's what they have an issue with. So I certainly don't have an issue with that, and I don't know whether they've had that discussion on a county commission level or not, but I don't think there's anything wrong with the taxation of those units. I think they're competing with our traditional hotels, and that's fine, but they should be competing on a level playing field. And the discussions I've had with the people who represent Airbnb and some of those other groups is, they don't have an issue with the taxation. Their big issue, and the reason there's a lot of hitching in trying to iron out that legislation in Tallahassee, is they're worried that communities are going to ban them. Miami Beach, for example, has basically put a fee on operating these, and the fee is something absurd. It's something like between $10,000 and $20,000 to be able to do this kind of work, and it's prohibitive, obviously. So, or I'm sorry, that's a fine, not a fee, but a fine for not following the rules. And so, you know, I think, I don't think that the folks that I've talked to on that side of it have an issue with taxation.
No, but we did, we did have a significant discussion in the House about regulation, and they wanted to go back to 2014, which was before we put in place the Airbnb legislation, and it did not pass. And that is much more restrictive on the Airbnb. It would have let you have a lot more restrictions on the, what they could do at the houses, but it didn't go through the session.
Representative Berman, back to the $500,000 for people coming out of prison, how would that affect one individual?
How would that affect one individual? If that person goes to this, it's a facility that's in Pahokee, and if you go there, you live in the facility, and they teach you how to get back into society and how to reintegrate. And so there's a lot of different people who go through, who file, cycle through the facility.
And is the purpose to help them restore, get their rights restored?
I mean, we would love to see restoration of rights at this point in the state of Florida. Unfortunately, our governor has done everything to not help restore people's rights. There is a petition that is pending that could hopefully be on the ballot in 2018 for some restoration of rights for films, but what we're doing is just teaching them basic skills to reintegrate back into the community.
But with restoration of rights, I'm just saying, any legislature group, I'm just saying, you know, are you all pushing for it, or you all just saying, we'll wait for 2018?
Oh, absolutely. Well, absolutely. I mean, we owe, I'm not one of, do you bring the legislation? Oh, so he's the sponsor, so you have the sponsor here.
Yeah, I'm the sponsor of the Restoration of Rights Bill in the Senate. And I'll just say, we haven't been able to really get it a hearing, but the good news is that there is the ability to put that on the ballot in 2018. They're collecting signatures. It's very difficult. The legislature has made it very difficult for citizen-led initiatives to be able to get on the ballot. They need to collect somewhere around 600,000 signatures over the next six months in order to get that on the ballot. Very difficult. And usually, that takes a paid effort of hiring signature gatherers. But as far as criminal justice reform goes, I sit on criminal justice, two committees in the Senate, and I will say this, there has been a bipartisan effort in the Senate to do serious criminal justice reform in the state of Florida, and stop sending people to prison who aren't violent, who just need some help. Stop locking them away for 20 years when they've committed a crime that hasn't hurt anybody. We've done that, and it's been unsuccessful. It hasn't really contributed in any way to a safer society, and it's been expensive. And that's money that we could be spending to educate our kids, to pave our roads, to make sure our environment is in good shape, to do water projects, all of those kinds of things. We're incarcerating people for 20 years who got caught with something in their pocket. And, you know, maybe that substance is illegal and they should be punished, but they probably shouldn't, we probably shouldn't be paying to house them for 20 years in a state facility. So the problem in that, and certainly not Representative Berman, but the problem in that criminal justice reform has been a reluctance on the part of the House to be able to do these kinds of things. We're hoping, I know the Senate President, who sits on the other side of the aisle as me, is a Republican, it is a priority of his, and I'm hoping that we're going to make it a priority in this next session.
Best estimation, what does it cost to house a person for 20 years?
Well, it goes up. The costs depend on where you're housed. The costs depend on where you're housed and what kind of facility you need, but it's usually between $19,000 and $30,000 a year per prisoner. So, you know, you multiply that and you get a pretty penny. I mean, you're talking upwards of close to $1 million for 30 years. And again, you know, there are better, we've found over the last 10 or 15 years, there are better options. There are ways that you can integrate people back into society and make them tax-paying members of society and have them contributing and volunteering in their community and raising families and starting businesses. And, you know, that's a much, much better use of our funds, and it's cheaper.
I just wanted to know, not that I'm planning on doing anything wrong, thank you.
Well, the good news is that I think we are trying to do some downward departure. We have these mandatory minimums that seemed like a good idea 30 years ago, but we have judges for a reason, and, you know, judges should have some discretion based on the circumstances. And you see people who have just made a dumb mistake walk into court and have to go serve prison time because the judge has no choice. And I think what they found, and even the most conservative of states like Texas, Alabama, Georgia, is that's just not the best use of their money, and it doesn't help prevent crime in the future. So we're a little bit behind even the most conservative states in the United States here in Florida, and the hope is that we'll move forward in that.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Forrest from the city lobbyist.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you guys again. It's been a few months since I've been up here at the actual podium, but it's been a little longer since I've seen you guys, I think, in person. I'll try not to duplicate too much of what was said by the Senator and the representative. Just kind of gave you a quick synopsis of some of the things, how they directly appeal to the city of Boynton Beach. I'll also refer back to a memo I sent probably, oh, I guess way back in May now. It kind of goes through things step by step, gives you the bill numbers, gives you exact specifics on a lot of what Representative Berman and Senator Clemens talked about and other things that I'll go through. As they mentioned, it was a very tough year for individual appropriations for individual cities. We did push for a $950,000 appropriation for the Mangrove Park water quality and access improvements. In fact, Senator Clemens and Representative Jakett helped file that for us and get that moving along. Unfortunately, we weren't successful this year. I think you had to look at projects kind of like a baseball game, and unfortunately, we get, you know, one swing at the bat every single year, about three months of the year. And if you're able to connect three times out of 10, you're going to go in the Hall of Fame. We bring home a water project, it means about every one to three years here in the city of Boynton Beach. Last year, we had one in the project list, it got vetoed, so next year we're due. So I'm going in optimistic into the, into the future. Also, this year, we have been successful in recent years with FERDAP money, Florida Recreational Development, Parks Developmental Assistance for Parks, basically. And unfortunately, this year, they didn't fund either the small or large projects in the budget for either project. So again, those are two areas. I think we'll continue to work with their staff, and we'll put together not only an aggressive water project application, but also stuff for the parks. And I think covering those bases will be, we'll be looking pretty good going forward. Senator Clemens gave me a compliment, but I can't thank them enough. They really are fantastic folks to work with. The entire delegation, the folks from not only all of Palm Beach County, but kind of the south end of the county, a lot of times I walk in with Senator Clemens or Senator Powell, and it doesn't matter who is actually, you know, from that district, if they're on the committee, they're there to help out for Boynton Beach. Same thing with Representative Jakett, Rep. Berman, Rep. Hager, Rep. Slossberg. The municipal lines get blurred, the district lines get blurred, and for good or bad, they see me coming and they just go, what do you need, Matt? What do you need? And so I really can't thank them enough for all they do to help not only Boynton Beach, but everybody here in the South County of Palm Beach County. Senator Clemens was very modest in his remarks regarding the passage of sober homes. This was a huge, huge bill this year, folks. I've been working this project for several years along with Senator Clemens because he's the one that sponsors, but I'm the one that goes out and pushes it. And I'll tell you, this was the first year that in the hallways, people were approaching me in opposition to the bill. That's a good sign. When people are opposed to it, it means it's actually going to impact something, which means the people on the other side of it were waking up and saying, hey, hey, we don't want this bill to pass. That means you're in the right direction. So I'm very excited that he was able to pass this legislation this year along with Representative Hager. But make no mistake about it, I do think it's just one more step. I think you guys need to keep bringing legislative ideas forward. I love the idea of possibly giving, making them part of the rooming house ordinance or also then, I hate to say it, collecting tourist development tax from them. Anyway, you can at least get some benefit out of the folks that are staying in those in addition to the community. So I think it's one step. At the same time, do not think it's a silver bullet. It's not going to solve the entire problem. However, it's still one more step forward. Representative Berman mentioned the micro wireless infrastructure preemption. I highly recommend your legal counsel, your city attorney, review that bill. It is HB 687 that passed. It does allow a lot of new discretion when it comes to the co-location of small utility facilities. However, this bill got a lot of attention throughout the session, a lot of attention, a lot of alerts from the League of Cities. It did not pass the way it started out, which is why I think it's critical that your city attorney and all of you get educated on exactly what did pass. For example, when it first started, they were going to be allowed to co-locate these devices on any structure, anything in the easement, anything in the right of way. They could put it on a street sign, they could put it on a traffic signal, they could put it on the crossbar of a traffic signal. It could be the size of a mini refrigerator, it could be the size of many different things. At the end of the day, the size of the structure has got, was extremely limited, and also the pole it can go on, as Rep. Berman said, an existing pole. Also, the pole must be at least 15 feet or higher, so decorative street lightings, your smaller structures will be prohibited. I strongly recommend, again, that your city attorney and your planning department review that bill because this is kind of opening up the, I wouldn't say the floodgates, but AT&amp;T, Verizon, your big entities, aren't the ones you're going to worry about. It's going to be a lot of small fly-by-night companies that are going to be, you know, turning in applications at your permitting office, and they're going to say, we have the right to do this, we have the right to do this, we have the right to do this. Your staff needs to be educated on exactly what they have the right to do and what they don't, because the bill is very specific as to what it will allow. And I do think you're going to see an influx of these applications because the whole idea behind the 5G system is, can you guys tell, I fought this thing all session because I'm not one of these lobbyists, and yet I know a whole lot about it. The idea behind this system is they're going beyond the standard cell phone tower that you see one big tower standing somewhere, and they're going more of an, it's more of a net. So they need these co-location of facilities on poles. So instead of having one pole every mile or two miles or five miles, they can have a small cell tower every 100 yards, 200 yards, 300 yards. So you're going to see a lot more applications coming in. In regards to a little bit what Commissioner Romano mentioned, vacation rentals, this bill, I know a lot about also because, again, I've been involved with it for many clients for many years. You basically have two sides up there. You have local government folks who want more, say, in the way they can regulate local, the vacation rental properties. Some want to go as far as the Senator mentioned in prohibiting them, some want simply to regulate them to certain areas, some want to determine only can be so many per block. They all have different scales, but the local governments, in the end of the day, want more ability to regulate. Vacation rentals want more ability to not be regulated in the terms of a local government. They're fine just being governed by a hotel, collecting the tourist development tax and remitting. The problem is that middle ground. What failed again this year was, the bill that was moving actually would have given more ability to the vacation rentals. There was actually legislation filed also that would give more ability to the vacation rentals. It didn't move at all. So you still have the same stalemate where the local governments have some ability but not complete, and the vacation rentals have some discretion but not total autonomy that they would like. At the end, when it comes down to the issue you're talking about with the tax collector, the issue so much for the big guys like Airbnb, it isn't so much remitting. They're fine with remitting the tourist development tax. The question is auditing. They don't want necessarily to have to open up their books as to say, this is all the people that are, that are vacation rentals, these are all the people that collected the tax. They would happy to say, these are all the Airbnb, Airbnb owes you X amount of money, here's your check. Well, most tax collectors don't fall on the honor system when it comes to how much tax do you owe. They want, they like to know exactly what you're paying. And I think that that is the, that is the crux of the issue. And I do think it will get worked out. As Representative Berman pointed out, the Uber bill, ride sharing, transportation network companies, it passed this year. This was, I think, the fourth year, I think, that bill. Three years ago, you would have thought the sky was falling when that bill was proposed. There was taxi cabs fighting everybody, it was the end of the world. This year, by the end of it, it passed quietly, seamlessly, everybody had figured out all the issues, and now we all use Airbnb, or we use Uber or Lyft and taxis, you know, and the issue's been worked out. I do think you'll get to that with the folks like Airbnb and VRBOs and the other places like that. I do still think it's going to be a couple more sessions before they figure out that middle spot. This was, like they said also, there was no shortage of bad local government bills, bad preemption bills that we were fighting. To continue my sports metaphors, it was, it's like being a hockey goalie. I feel like we had a really good game, we stopped about 30 shots, a couple did get by. Some of the ones we did stop, a horrible bill called HB 17 that would preempted almost every local regulation to the state level, everything from plastic bags to straws to signage for gas stations to anything you could think of. Luckily, that went away quickly. There was also legislation that would have limited or capture local business tax or local business tax receipts, which again, was a, was a good thing to see come and go. One piece of legislation that did pass, though, that the impacts are still yet to be determined, was the homestead property tax exemption question. That'll be on the November 2018 ballot. It proposes an increase to the homestead exemption for all levies other than school district levies on the assessed value greater than 100,000 and up to 125,000. A lot of local governments are worried about that passing, what it will impact, what it would mean to the, to the counties and municipal budgets. At this point, it's kind of worrying about what's going to happen a year from now, but I do think, you need to put that on your radar and be conscious of what happens after the November 2018 ballot. Keep in mind, again, that must pass at a 60% threshold because it is a, an amendment to the Constitution. Public records law, this is a good thing that passed. You guys have been plagued by a bunch of gotcha lawsuits, local governments around the state, by folks who walk in, they stop the guy mowing grass and say, hey, I have a public records request. And the minute that municipal employee says, I can't hand you a public records request here, they file a lawsuit and say, you denied us our sunshine rights to certain documents. I've seen it happen through various local governments, and as frivolous as they may sound, even literally, I've seen it literally bugging a guy working on the street for a public records request. The legislation was passed a year ago that would help it for contractors. This year it passed that affects it for local governments. I would again tell your city attorney to make sure they review that new change so they can stop paying out these, the lawyers that send them a letter to tell them they owe something. The last thing I want to bring to your attention that just passed during the special session. So we concluded the regular session on May 6. We had a special session just about a week or so ago, it concluded on June 9. The big thing that passed out of there from the local government level is the, the impact of the medicinal marijuana amendment that was voted on by the people. So it is now being, the legislation has not been signed by the governor, but all indications are that it will be signed from a local level. I think what's important to remember is now, this is in the, this is in the Constitution. It's voted on by the people, it was approved by the people, as the Senator was, was very eloquent at saying many times on the floor, I listened to the discussion many times, this is now a medicinally protected product in the Florida Constitution. He said it much better than I did, but it is now in the Constitution, so whether we like it or not, it is there, it is protected. What it means to the local governments, in the bill, it says, a county or municipality may ban dispensary facilities from being located within their borders. So you have the ability to ban these from being within the city of Boynton Beach. However, if you allow a dispensing facility within your borders, you may not restrict the number of dispensing facilities, and you may not enact ordinances regulating dispensing facilities that are more restrictive than ordinances regulating pharmacies. And you may not charge a license or permit fee in an amount greater than the fee charged to pharmacies. So again, I know a lot of cities have passed preemptive ordinances. It's now time to update those, it's now time to see exactly what the legislation says and make sure your ordinance is in compliance with what is now going to be law as soon as the governor signs it. That kind of wraps up most of the legislative items. To give you guys some key dates in reverse order, the 2018 session is literally fast approaching. I always like when people say, oh, we didn't do it this year, we didn't do it this year. We have like a few months in Tallahassee, and then we're back up again a few months later. The next session actually begins in January, January 9 to March 9. So we're just over six months away from the actual start of the session, and we're then only nine months away from the end of the next legislative session. So don't think of it like a whole other year before we start again. We're going to be done with the next session in nine months. The committee weeks will begin, the Senator said September, but I'm sure, hope in October. So we don't know for sure when the committee weeks will begin, the legislative leaders have not announced it yet, but you got to figure, we're about three months away from when they're going to begin, which means we need to get started with our legislative goals, the planning for the city of Boynton Beach, projects we're going to be asking for, legislation we're going to be pushing. Because to finish my sports metaphors, pre-session committee weeks are like preseason football. They mean nothing, and they mean everything. You know, you cannot start the session on January 9. You've got to start during the committee weeks, and you got to hit the ground running. And in this case, that's going to be probably October. And that is the 2017 legislative cycle in a nutshell. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. At the same time, the beauty of having me is I live right up the road. I live 10 minutes up the road. You can always bother me for lunch, we can get together as much as you'd like in the summertime here. Commissioner.
Thank you. Matt, I want to personally say to you, thank you for, you know, at least working in Tallahassee. I'm probably the only one up here that worked with you longer than anybody else, but just because you don't bring money back, that does not mean that you have failed the city. But you worked on bills, and I just want to tell you, keep working on the bills. When time comes to receive funds, you know, you always give us what we want and what we need, so keep plugging.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Matt. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Erica Whitfield from the Palm Beach County School Board, member District 4.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for having me here today again. I'm Erica Whitfield, and I just want to say good evening to the mayor and vice mayor and all the commissioners. Oh, do you have a little clicker for me?
Clicker is on the other side.
Okay. Should I go over there?
Yep.
Okay. And I can see. Great, thank you. I was wondering how we were going to get slide to slide. I figured we'd figure that out. I did bring two very heavy hitters with me today, so I'd love to take an opportunity from the school district to introduce them to everyone here. Our first person is Dr. Glenda Sheffield. She's our secondary instructional superintendent from this area. Everyone say hello. And our second person is Mrs. Maria Bishop, and she is our elementary instructional superintendent. And they are here in case you have questions that I cannot answer because they know everything about everything. I'm going to hold you guys to that. So we're going to talk a little bit about the schools in Boynton. The first thing that I want to say is you guys have an absolute ton of schools, so we're going to go through that. I've been on the school board for about two and a half years, and since I've been on the school board, we have had a ton of changes. It has, it has been really actually very inspiring to be a part of this and to believe that we're really moving forward as a school district. So since we, since I came on to the board, we actually hired a new superintendent, Dr. Robert Avosa. He's been with us about two years now. Since we've had him, one of the biggest changes to the district was we put together a new strategic plan. Before, we had like kind of a two-page sheet that's had some information about where we thought we were going to go. Now we have metrics and data, and we are really moving forward with our information. So I'm going to go over that really quickly. I put up our vision and our mission. So you can see, really, this is, this is what drives us every day at the school district. So our vision, just for those people that are listening, the school district of Palm Beach County envisions a dynamic, collaborative, multicultural community where education and lifelong learning are valued and supported, and all learners reach their highest potential to succeed in the global economy. Our mission is that the school district of Palm Beach County is committed to providing community where education and lifelong learning are valued and supported, and all learners reach their highest potential to succeed in the global economy. Our mission is that the school district of Palm Beach County is committed to providing a world-class education with excellence and equity. That's really important as we go forward with the data. I'll talk to you about that. To empower each student to reach his or her highest potential with the most effective staff to foster the knowledge, skills, and ethics required for responsible citizenship and productive careers. So I know nobody can read this slide that's out there, but just so I can talk to you a little bit about it, it reminds me to go forward with it. We created, this is part of our strategic plan, our long-term outcomes, which we shopped out to everyone and kind of talked a little bit about with the community as we developed them. This was a really big project taken on by our superintendent to figure out where should we go as a school district. So our long-term outcomes are to increase reading on grade level by third grade, and our goal is 75%. We are ensuring high school readiness. So this is our middle school goal, getting everybody ready in eighth grade to get to high school and make sure that they're ready for it. To increase the high school graduation rate, our goal is 90%, and this is across all ethnicities and racial groups. And then to foster postgraduate success. We want to make sure that our students are actually succeeding after they leave us. We want to make sure that not only did we prepare them to get through high school, but hopefully prepare them for college and technical schools and that they are persisting in those. There are some strategic themes that we work with, just so you can see that up there. Effective and relevant instruction to meet the needs of all students. Positive and supportive school climate, this is my favorite one. For any of those that know me, I really believe in having a workplace that is good for the employees and also is a really a good place to raise our students and our children. And talent development, where we actually grow our own employees, and creating a high-performance culture. So I'm going to go forward, and I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about all your schools. I'm going to go as fast as I can through this. So if you have questions later on, feel free to stop me. But you have so many schools that I really wanted to hit on this a little bit. So if you see on this top slide, we're talking, this first page is all about Rolling Green Elementary. If you look at this first slide, you'll see that we actually broke down the test takers ethnicity at the Rolling Green Elementary level. So the first column, you'll see in the blue, 73% of the students who took the test in 2016 were black, 23% were Hispanic, and 3% were white. And then the next year, we see how many students actually took the test in 2017. As you can see, we have a little bit more were black students, 75%, a little less Hispanic, 19%, and then 3% remain same across in the white category. So the reason that's important is because when we were looking at all of our scores, what we decided to do was see if we were educating students the same across racial divides. And that's really important because it shows whether or not we're bringing in some of those biases with us into the classroom as we're teaching. So you can see the changes over time. In Rolling Green, they went down a little bit from 2016 to 17. The number of black students that were reading on grade level in 2017 versus 16 went up 1%. Hispanic went down from 27% to 15, and then white, 46, went up to 47%. So you can see the changes over time, and that indicates how we educate our students at those schools. By breaking it down, we're actually really looking at the students on a more personal level and hopefully being able to do a better job of educating them. Oops, that did not come across. I'll tell you those numbers. So this is the math scores went up about 2% from fiscal year 16 to 17. That's our third grade scores in Rolling Green. And then what I'm going to really talk to you guys a little bit more about, and I'm going to go through this a little faster. In Rolling Green, one of the other things that we looked at, and this is all our schools, is we looked at our absentee rates. And this is why I'm here today, is because I want to talk to you guys about absences and what can be done at the city level, and how this really ties in with our graduation scores and our reading on grade level. So at Rolling Green, you can see the top category is kids that were absent 11 to 20 days, and the second chart going down is kids that were absent more than 21 days. The all overall number, and then this is broken down by racial subgroups, is all is 20%. And then in 2017, the number of kids that were absent 11 to 20 days went up to 26%. And then kids that were absent 21 days went from 7% to 10% from 2016 to 2017. So this is really important because this is something that we've really focused on this year at a school district. So I realize that this is phenomenally boring, but I will go through and just show you the numbers that I think are the most important. So we'll see Pointe Ciana Elementary. The ELA reading for all students went up this year, 5% more kids reading on grade level. The math scores, they went up in Pointe Ciana Elementary as well, from 69 to 80% in third grade. And then you'll see the number of kids that were absent kind of somewhat remained the same. It went down at the 21% in that one. You'll see the bottom category on the right-hand side, it went down. Those were the number of white students on the far right, Hispanic to the left of that, to the left of that, black, and then all went down 2%. Okay. So we have Galaxy, Forest Park, Citrus Cove, more Citrus Cove, Freedom Shores, Crosspoint. See how many schools you have? It's crazy. Okay, we're going to go to Congress Middle. So I'm going to move a little faster through this so I don't have anyone fall asleep and have Boynton City Commission ever invite me back. Okay, Congress. So we have here, this is our middle school here in town. So you'll see that the ELA reading remained about the same across the board. You'll see that 35% from 2016, 2017 were reading on grade level. And then in the math scores, it went from 35% to 42% for our eighth graders for reading on grade level. So it's a little bit of an improvement. And then the absences, you can see right there, the number of students 11 to 20 days, all 8% to 2% went down. And then it went from 2% to 1%. So it went a little bit further down after that. And then Boynton Beach Community High School, this is our big high school here in town. You'll see our ELA reading scores, 25% went down to 23%, took a little dip for the all, but you can see the differences in the racial subgroups there. And then the actual Algebra I scores, which is an indicator for graduation, you'll see that number actually went from 18% to 19% over the year. And then here's our absences again. This is really important for the next two points that we're going to make. So you'll see the Boynton Beach High School, 11 to 20 days, all went down 5%, and then all for over 21 days went down about 2%. So we made it through all the data. Yay! All right, so why is this important? The important part that I want to indicate to the community is that our attendance matters. It really matters if students show up to school every day or not. And this is important for everyone here and for the district, but also for the community. So what we did when we first started looking at all this data is we actually looked to see the graduation rate over time and how that ties into whether or not a student had attended school over the years. So you see that kids who had zero to five absences graduated at an 86.5% rate. And then students who had zero to 10 absences graduated at 85.8% rate. And then it goes up dramatically, 72.1% if they had 11 to 20 absences, and 53.3% if they had 21 or more absences. So you see over time that if you have a student who just does not come to school, they can, you know, think that they're doing fine. But over time, even starting at, you know, third grade, it will have an effect on whether or not they graduate. So... This is another one of those charts, same numbers that you can see in a little bit clearer form. And so this is a, sorry, I click on mine, I don't click on yours. So in this one, you'll see this is actually what happens at Galaxy Elementary. They actually have to create a system to address attendance. And the way this system works is that over time, they will actually put their staff in place that will address attendance with each one of our students, whether or not they show up, and making sure to call the parents, and making sure that they're actually being followed up with. Because I know as a parent who has a student in public school, you know, sometimes you just feel like, is today another day that I have to send my student to school? And it becomes, there is a hassle that's associated with that. But we have to remind the parents, every parent needs to be reminded that it's so important that every day counts, and every day is an important day for your student to be at school because they will learn if they're there, and they do better, and they're more likely to graduate if that happens. So, the next steps for the district, for us, we are developing comprehensive messages and toolkits to address these behavior changes, to hopefully remind students how important it is to go to school. We're going to provide steps for success for the parents, and then we're going to understand what success looks like and how that's different for every family depending where they're at. What that means is that if you're taking a student who has been absent 20 days last year, maybe this year it's just the improvement over time that you can't expect them to have perfect attendance, but we would like to see them improve how they're doing, how many times they're making it to school, if they, you know, were tardy very frequently, and then they were able to create it so that they weren't tardy as frequently, that that might be successful for them. So, and then we want to talk as a district about how absenteeism is related to student success. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to come see you guys today. Because the next step is for the community. So this is for you all, and hopefully we can talk about ways that you can lead this to success and possibly even with your education council. But, so for communities, we want to have you all assist us with this message priority and dissemination. You guys are parents in the community. You help decide what this community sees as a priority. And we at the school district believe that attendance is huge. And as we're trying to work towards improving your graduation rate, to get it up to those numbers that we have set up, trying to get everyone to 90% graduation, this is something we think is very important, is making sure that we get students to school. The second thing is assisting with positive behavior support incentives. This is something that we do at all our schools on some level or another. And basically what it is, is that when somebody does something right, we want to recognize that too. So we're not always punishing them for when they do something wrong. So ways that the city could help with things like that, and certain cities have done that, is, you know, they may recognize or put aside a little pot of money to give rewards or incentives to students who really do improve over time. So not necessarily just perfect attendance, which some people like to do, is recognize perfect attendance, but to do something where it assists and celebrates successes and recognizes success. However, that looks for every child. So the schools would be willing to help with this if this is something that your community is interested in taking on. One more thing I wanted to mention, since we had the legislators here discussing what's happening at the state, you know how I mentioned with Boynton Beach High School, the Algebra I scores and how that was an indicator for graduation success or not? One of the things that we do is after they take the 10th grade FSA, if the student is not passing at that time, they have the opportunity to take the ACT or the SAT. And right now, the way that it's set up is if you get an SAT of 430, that's considered passing, and you will be able to graduate based on that. The state is currently looking, the Department of Education is currently looking at upping that number to 500. And I just had a really fascinating discussion today with our research and development guy, that we talked about what's that going to look like for our students. So if you didn't pass the FSA and you have to take the SAT or the ACT in order to pass school and to graduate, right now you have a 65% chance of getting there with the current scores as they stand. But if that number goes up, it's going to be only about 13% of those students that make it. So this is a very big deal from our Department of Education on whether or not this is going to work. So that's actually, they're taking information from the districts right now. We're going to be giving our report on that. But that's something that's going to be a very big deal on deciding whether or not our students are reaching that 90% that this school board has decided is important to us. I think that's pretty much everything I wanted to cover today. Do you guys have any questions for me or for the two women that I brought with us tonight?
I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not so much worried about attendance. I'm worried about transportation. And the reason I'm worried about transportation is that when your kids are going to and from school, you'll have a bus stop one block and let some off, and then the next bus is heading south and will let some off. I'm just saying, if you all could like centralize a location, like I said, this street will be where you will pick up and let off. I'm just saying because by the time one car gets from one place to the other, it has to stop again. I'm just saying it ties up traffic. I'm just saying you all need to look at transportation a little closer.
Okay. Well, if there's a specific spot, I would love it if you would let us know if there's a tie-up in traffic that you're concerned about, because we really can look at that. That's something, we make changes kind of on a daily basis when there's an issue, if we come across something. Also, we're real concerned about the safety and security of our students. So we try to make sure that, you know, we put a stop as close to their home as we can so that they don't have to walk as far. But if there's a specific issue with traffic, I'd be happy to get our transportation department to look at that.
Yes, transportation on Northwest 17th Avenue is one. I'm just saying, over by Hestra, I'm just saying I can give you two or three more examples, but I'm just saying I'm watching, and this is what's happening.
You're absolutely welcome to email me, either you or anybody else, or call me.
I will get the city manager, she will email you.
Absolutely, please do. One other item I just thought of that I wanted to share, since I do have a nine-year-old and I'm really excited about the fact that all these scores just came out, a lot of people were thinking, "How do I find out about my students' scores?" You can go on EdLine to find that out, or after July 13th, each school will receive a detailed report for their students. So you can go and talk to your school after July 19th.
Okay. I was at the MPO governance meeting, and they said that the Broward School District is on the MPO. Could you speak to your transportation department, see if they would be interested?
I have actually asked if I can be on the MPO. I would really like to. It's one of my passions. I love metropolitan planning. My father-in-law used to run it, and I think it's fascinating, many years ago, before the guy that's there now. So I have been asking. I would really like to do it. So I will definitely consider keep asking about that if that's something that either I can do or somebody from our department. I think it would be crucial. I would love to see it. I'm a big fan.
All right. Thank you so much. Yes?
Jerry Taylor, 1086 Southwest 27. Just in case, a little feedback on just one point that you made, maybe, and it's not at you, but maybe you could take that back to the school board. My concern was that when you said that the school board's goal was for graduation 90%, that really concerns me. I would think that your goal would be 100%. You would want every child to graduate. That's what I would think. If I was to say that I would like all of our city employees to perform good work 90% of the time, that would be a real concern, I think, for the city. We expect our employees to do good work 100% of the time. So I think maybe you should say, at least your goal ought to be 100% graduation. That's just my input.
Yes, sir. You are 100% right on that. We actually had this conversation at the school board, and we had the same talk about how we actually wanted everyone to be reading on grade level, everyone to graduate on time. We just scared our teachers too much. That was it. So we brought our numbers down a little bit. Hopefully, when we reach 90, we will then go to 95 and then 100. But I completely agree with you. That's our goal. We want every student to succeed.
Erica, I just want to thank you personally and publicly, in addition to the rest of the school board members, for the decision that you made a few months ago, back when there was some real scare with the TPS situation, and just helping families feel secure and making sure that their kids, when they were at school, knew that their kids would be at school and there wouldn't be any type of, you know, situation where federal officials would come and arrest them or take them out of school. So allowing for those families to have that peace of mind and security, I just thank you guys for doing that. That was really important, especially in the, you know, in the communities that were affected by those situations. So thank you for stepping up and doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was very proud of that moment as well. Just one more comment about the school grades. We should actually know the grades hopefully in the next couple of weeks. So if you're interested in what the actual letter is that goes with your schools, that should be coming out in mid-July.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Board Member Whitfield as well for taking the time out tonight. The issue of attendance is extremely important. If the statistics up there didn't make it clear as a teacher, it's just, you know, to say bluntly, if a student is chronically absent, despite the best efforts of a teacher, you just can't make up a certain amount of education when a student has missed 10 or 20 or 30 days of school in a year. So, you know, if you have kids, obviously, attendance is extremely important, and there's a direct correlation to graduation rates. Again, I'd like to thank Board Member Whitfield for coming here. I think we have a special relationship. We both ran as first-time electives for the school board, and I look forward to working with her now in my capacity as a city commissioner, as well as the new CTA president for the teachers, because I know her passion and her dedication is unparalleled. So I look forward to working with her in the future in those two roles.
Any other questions? No? If you guys have any questions for me, I love doing these updates. I hope it wasn't too terribly boring to have all those, all that information. Oh, I did want to mention one more thing related to the legislation. I just keep thinking of all these things I wanted to mention when I was listening to legislators. As you know, HB 7069 did pass. It did pass the governor's desk. It was very stressful for us at the school district. We really did make a very concerted effort as a board and as a governance team to ask people to talk to their legislators about it. Unfortunately, it did go through. There are some positive things associated with it. I think it will be good, you know, I'm a big fan of recess. I'm not sure how we fit it into a day with six hours for elementary, but having recess for our students is always a good thing. So I know we'll rise to that challenge. And then there is some concern about some charter school funding. So if you guys have any concerns about that, that's something we can come back and I can get with you more on, on the way we're going to handle as these new laws are coming down to us. But I really appreciate your time here today, and I appreciate you guys having me. Yes, sir.
If someone wanted to copy that report, where could they get one from?
I have a few with me. If anybody wants one now, I have some extra copies that I made, or you could email me and I'd send it to you.
I would like one.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements. The Fishing for Fireworks event that will be held at Intracoastal Park, 2240 North Federal Highway on Saturday, July 1st. Activities will begin at 6:00 PM, and the fireworks are scheduled to start at 9:00 PM.
Good evening. Amy Blackman, Recreation Superintendent. As the mayor said, Fishing for Fireworks will be Saturday on the 1st, and it will start at 6:00 PM. Like we talked about last commission meeting, we're pretty excited about this event, and we hope everyone joins us for a full evening of a lot of family fun activities, great food, some cocktails, and a lot of great fireworks with a wonderful band, a couple bands that we have. So, any questions on that?
I don't have a question, but I'm kind of disappointed, you know, that you all are having it on July 1st. My nephew is getting married on July 1st, so I won't be there. So I just want to let the public know. That's the reason I will not be at the fireworks. Thank you.
And if we do go forward with having it on the Saturday, I would say, we suggest we call it the Independence Day Festivals, so that people don't get confused with July 4th Festivals.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, June 27, 2017, as National HIV Testing Day. Will Wisnay Marcellus please come up? City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. We're as world... Whereas worldwide, an estimated 36.7 million people are currently living with HIV/AIDS, and 35 million people have already died of AIDS-related illnesses, and an estimated 2.1 million new infections occur each year. And whereas, in Florida, more than 114,000 people are living with HIV, and approximately 4,500 new infections occur annually. And in Palm Beach County, one in 170 residents are living with HIV, and one in eight HIV-infected individuals don't know that they're infected. And whereas, an individual's behavior, not race or ethnicity or sexual orientation, put him/her at risk of HIV infection. And whereas, new treatments are bringing hope and enhancing the quality of life for those who are affected. However, these considerable advances can only help individuals if they know their HIV status. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the 27th of June 2017 as National HIV Testing Day.
I just wanted to give a thank you to the chambers and to this body for recognizing June 27th, which is next Tuesday. That's National HIV Testing Day. South Florida has really been hit hard by the HIV epidemic, and in response to that, there's been several different initiatives to get awareness out there in the community about HIV and how it can be prevented. I'm proud to say that I work for an agency that has taken the initiative to link people to care and to provide outreach at no cost to the citizens of Boynton Beach. So again, thank you to the chambers for recognizing this day.
Right, Wednesday before you go, excuse me, in Broward County, they have a free HIV testing unit at Mobil. Do you all have one for Palm Beach County?
We don't have a Mobil unit, but what we're doing is, and there's a website at the, actually, at the Florida Department of Health website, there's a list of all the different National HIV Testing Day activities going on. Our agency, Genesis Community Health, will be setting up at a local Walgreens, actually the one right around the corner here on Federal Highway, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, to provide free HIV testing to any community members that come into that Walgreens. And there's going to be several other locations throughout the city and in the, and the county where that same testing is available as well.
Just a thought, I'm just saying, when Broward County is not using their van and stuff, they might want to bring it to Palm Beach County. I'm just saying, if you could pardon me, I'm just trying to help you all reach more.
No, that's, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Boynton Beach, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining our quality of life, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic, environmental well-being of the City of Boynton Beach. And whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreational service for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas, parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environment well-being of the city and parks and natural recreation areas, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors in the City of Boynton Beach, recognize the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Parks and Recreation Month.
I just said to the mayor, of course, I'm going to say something. And he said, yes, I know. So other than all the wonderful things that you heard in the proclamation, and I know it was an earful, we wanted to tell you a couple other things. So the month for us is very exciting, because every week during the month, we're going to have some contests. So if you have your pictures of you enjoying our beautiful facilities or our abundance of 29 so parks, please send them to us. And if you don't send them to us, please tag them as #PlayOnJuly. We would really appreciate that. And the National Recreation and Parks Association will pick those up. So in addition to every wonderful thing that the mayor wrote in the proclamation, we all know that, that 74% of our children do not get enough daily physical activity to make them lead a healthy lifestyle, or honestly, most adults don't get that either. Parks and recreation activities give us a place to get that healthy lifestyle and be able to really enhance our lifestyle, prevent childhood diabetes, obesity, in adults. And more than that, not just the physical, but their mental well-being as well. And there's a lot that, that should be said for that as well. So we're not only making them healthy physically, but we're also making them healthy mentally, so that they're a well-rounded individual. Therefore, they do grow up to be a well-rounded member of our society, and hopefully, here in Boynton Beach. Most Americans agree that recreation is a great value. Four in five Americans, four out of five Americans concur that the best value, that parks are a great value, and that's what they appreciate their tax dollars being spent on. Four in five Americans, that's, that's pretty amazing. They're okay with spending money on taxes for parks. We know our property values near parks are higher. We know that our properties near parks are going to appraise higher than property values that aren't around parks. And we also know that children that have access to playgrounds are approximately five times less likely to have, they are five times more likely to have healthier weight than those, that children that don't live around parks. So those are very overwhelming statistics. That's a national statistic. So we know these things, and we're very proud that we are, we do a lot here in Boynton Beach to promote parks and recreation. We appreciate your sport, your support, and we also appreciate you playing with us in the month of July and celebrating the power of play here in Boynton Beach. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Major, I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm going to pick on you tonight, okay? You are in charge of parks, and I'm just saying, you should have had your picture taken with this proclamation. And my whole take is that, you know, you are in charge of the parks here in the City of Boynton. If you can come up and get your picture taken, because every time we do something with parks, it's always, "Amy, you need to be in the picture." I'm sorry.
He's very humble.
Somebody take his picture.
After we take the picture, I have a few questions.
Absolutely.
Two things. One, can you repeat the hashtag, please?
Absolutely. It's #PlayOnJuly.
Play on July.
Play on.
Okay. And two, I definitely will be participating this month. I just signed up my son for the swim lessons at John Denson Pool.
Oh, that's fabulous.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's a great, great amenity that you guys are providing for the city residents, $40 for two, two weeks of swim lessons for our kids, and make sure that they're, you know, not getting susceptible to drowning and other issues, water-related issues. So, thank you.
That's fabulous. We look forward to seeing you.
And I learned how to swim in Wilson Pool before it was John Denson, so your son should have fun. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Goes way back.
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice. Broadcast over the airwaves and amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, societies, and countries by creating friendship and sharing of ideas. And whereas amateur radio operators have always provided countless hours of community services, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades, and these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated. And whereas the state also recognizes the services amateur radios people also provide to our many emergency response organizations, including the American Red Cross and the City of Boynton Beach Emergency Management. And whereas, these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-athons, walk-athons, fairs, and other charitable public events. And whereas, the City of Boynton Beach recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who are, who also serve as weather spotters in the SkyWarn program of the US Government Weather Bureau, and the ARRi is the leading organization for amateur radio in the USA. And whereas, the ARRi Amateur Radio Field Day exercises will take place on June 24th and 25th, 2017, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communication without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby officially recognize June 19th to the 25th, 2017, as Amateur Radio Week. Thank you, Barry.
You have a few words? Just a few words. This is the 25th anniversary of Hurricane Andrew. I don't know how many people remember 25 years ago, but people in Palm Beach County were sweating bullets, because that hurricane was headed straight for us, and we were very lucky and unfortunately, it devastated Homestead. That could have been us. So the hams, every year, go out to the field and set up communications to be sure that we have communications with the outside world, should we have a disaster like that. And if this area was flattened, we can still go out and set up antennas and radios and communicate with the outside world to let them know what we need. It's this weekend, we have three sites in Palm Beach County that we're promoting. Everybody is invited to come out and see exactly what we do. It'll be in Okeechobee Park, it's going to be at the South Florida Science Museum, and in West Delray Park. And it's going to operate 24 hours from about noon on Saturday to noon on Sunday, and we try to contact as many other stations on amateur radio as we can. So I wanted to invite everybody out to come out and see what we do. Also, this summer, there's going to be a solar eclipse. And when you're talking about STEM and stuff like that, amateur radio does a lot of work with the sciences, and we're going to be participating in the solar eclipse and doing propagation experiments, and we'll have more about that when that comes up. So thank you. This means a lot to the hams in this area. There are over 3,000 licensed hams in Palm Beach County, and we here as, to help you as much as we can. So thank you very much. It means a lot.
Thank you. Next, we will open up to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations.
Hi, Susan Neuer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Got a couple topics to talk about tonight. First of all, as we're looking to move forward with the town square and with building all around the city, I would once again remind you, we desperately need office space, we need jobs, especially executive level or upper administration jobs. We do not need seniors assisted living downtown. We don't need, you know, more apartments, more condos. We need jobs. Second of all, we, we have a new building called 500 Ocean on Ocean Avenue. When you think of the ocean, you think of the colors, blue and green. And what is this building being painted? It's being painted some sort of shades of terracotta, which at no point indicates the ocean to me or anyone else. So I'm wondering how this was allowed to happen, that we could have terracotta on Ocean Avenue? So maybe we should be relooking at that. And that leads me to my next thing, which is Commissioner Katz, or sorry, Vice Mayor Katz, at some point talked about having an architectural review board at some point in the last year, God only knows what meeting it was. But he's right, and maybe we should be looking at bringing something like that up to our city, because then we wouldn't have terracotta on Ocean Avenue. Next, I would ask what we need to do to get lights on in the pavilion at Betty Thomas Park, down the street from both you and I. I was over there last night at about 10 o'clock, 9:30, 10 o'clock, talking to the kids about how late they want to have the lights left on during the summer. And there's all kinds of drug deals going on under the pavilion, because there's no lights out at the pavilion area. So I'm wondering what we can do to get lights on at the pavilion. And yes, I'm going to the Rec. Parks meeting later in the month to talk to them about the lights for the basketball courts, but is that the right place to bring this up to? Or is bringing this up here the right place to do it?
It's a good place to bring it up. Wally, do we already have lights in that pavilion?
No, there's not.
So this would be something we would have to... Okay. Is there anything we can do to alleviate that situation?
Well, Wally Major's Recreation and Parks Director, first of all, I would have to get together with Public Works to determine if the electrical is possible in that pavilion, and then ultimately, you know, we just have to take the residents nearby the park into consideration also, get some feedback from them, and then ultimately, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board can certainly discuss the topic and bring back a recommendation to you guys, if that's what you'd like.
Right, Susan, in regards to the paint, let me explain something to this board that's sitting up here. Some years ago, we had when they would bring a plan in or bring a building in, it was always mandatory that they would bring in and give us color swatches of what it would be painted as. I don't know whatever happened to that, that they do away with that, but this was something that the city did have in place. I remember voting on the colors when they bring them in the color schemes, and you all could look at it and find out what happened, that it dropped through the cracks, or we stopped doing it, or what. It was in place.
Thank you. It just seems crazy to have a terracotta-colored building on Ocean Avenue, and since I lost part of my time with everyone's answers. My other thing is, how many cars are actually allowed to park in a driveway? I have a problem with the house across the street from me. There are probably six to eight cars at any given time. I have reported it to code. My big issue is not, not only do, they can park however they want in their driveway, but my issue is they are parking on the street. They're not even parking halfway on the grass and half on the street. They are parking on the street, multiple cars at this one house, and block the street for everyone all the time. And is there some kind of regulation on this? And if not, should we have one?
Probably one they need to give a community standard, it's not just saying, you know, I'm tired of talking.
So, I mean, you said you've reported this to community standards already?
Yes.
With the address and everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's continuing on, and, you know, they're just going to say, yes, we're all related, and sign an affidavit saying they're all related, and they're not related, you know, they rent out rooms in the house, and no bathroom usage, because I watched the guys walk down the street to another house the people own to go use the bathroom and the showers down at the other house, a couple houses down. Yes. And of course, the rest of the neighborhood's really great, except for this house.
Well, we'll follow up with Mark and see what we can do to address that concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I guess community standards should take a look at those places, Susan. I know that for a fact, that if there's a residence without water, it's not habitable. So we will also look at utilities to make sure that there's a water bill to that residence.
Oh, there is water, just they don't pay rent to use the water.
Oh.
Yes. Their rent is so cheap, they use the water down the street.
I don't know if I should ask how you know all of this, but we're just going to leave that alone for right now.
Because people in the neighborhood talk, and you can observe an awful lot when you're a teacher and you're sitting home in the summer and just sit out and watch what goes on.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
All right. Saying no more, public audience is closed. Moving on to administrative. We have two advisory boards that have appointments. Commissioner Casello is not here, so Commissioner Romulus, would you want to wait till after the Planning and Development Board, as one of the applicants is also applying for that?
Yeah, I'll wait till after the Development Board, yes.
Moving on to Planning and Development Board. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Before I make an appointment, I need to ask the city attorney or somebody to give me leeway. When people are serving on multiple boards, what boards, can they serve on multiple boards? I'm just saying, I don't want to put somebody on a board and they have to get off of one, they own two boards, what board can they serve on, and how does this affect what is going on here with, I'm going to say Alexandra Wilson and also Susan Oria. Mrs. Oria serves on the Historic Preservation Board and Arts Commission. Alexandra Wilson serve on the Sure Tax Oversight Committee.
Commissioner, I did look into that, and the last time that was reviewed by the commission was in 2010. And at that time, a motion was made to allow people to serve on a regular, one board is a regular, and if they served on a second board, they would have to serve as an alternate. There was no, that was the extent of the motion at that time. There was discussion, and there has been a discussion on that since back to 1973. But that's the way it stands at this point. But that's the way it stands at this point. They can serve on two boards, one is a regular, one is an alternate.
So, I mean, not to, but how does that work with this Susan Neuer situation? Is she a regular member on both of those boards there?
Yes, she would have to, she would have to go down to an alternate if there's an alternate position available on those boards.
Oh, no, I'm saying she currently sits on the Historic Preservation Board and the Arts Commission right now.
But if there's already alternates, she couldn't take an alternate position because...
I don't think we followed the precedents then, because she's basically already on both of those boards as a regular member.
Right, that's true.
So it doesn't really matter, it seems like.
So if I appoint her tonight, she will have to get off one of those boards, that's what I'm saying. You have to drop one.
Be an alternate.
So this is an alternate position, so I'm just, before I even, you know, appoint her, I need to know, are you willing to drop one board to be an alternate on this board? Since you're here.
Neuer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Yes, I will do whatever I need to do.
Which board you're going to drop?
My understanding is if the clerk and I read it correctly, I can only be on one quasi-judicial and one regular board, which means I'd have to drop Historic Preservation unless there's some other ruling. And I misunderstood what she said.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and appoint you as an alternate to the PND Board, and you and the clerk work that out. I'm just saying, which board you're going to drop off of?
Whichever one I have to drop off of.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mayor, real quick.
Yeah.
You know, this is something that changes with commissions as far as the policy and desires sometimes, and this is certainly a matter that we can bring back to the board if you would like to take a different look at it. It's a matter of amending an ordinance.
Um...
Just to remind the commission, you can change it.
So, my take of it is, is that if we solve this problem, you know, there might be another problem in the future. However, let's face it, when we have too many, when we have someone who wants to be on too many boards, I think that's a good thing, not a bad thing.
And if we, and if we wanted to discuss it and bring it back, excuse me, we can bring it back on future agenda items like see when discussion of Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I'm just saying, when we're discussing boards, we could discuss it then.
All right, sounds good. Okay.
Library Board now? Let's go back to that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, forgot about it. Yeah, Library Board.
Motion to appoint Chris Simon for the regular position for the Library Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Saying none, Chris Simon is appointed. Moving on to consent agenda, is there anyone who would like to take an item off?
Motion approved.
Do I have a... All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have bids and purchases over $100,000. My quick question, are we also getting another electric vehicle?
No, sir, not on this list.
Okay.
$524,000 of the $691,000 is for a fire, a fire truck.
Got it.
Couple utility vehicles, a new wave runner for Ocean Rescue, and I believe a truck for our Facilities Department.
Laurie, since we're buying new...
Two trash pumps as well. Sorry, sir.
Okay, since we're buying new vehicles, how are we doing with vehicles and not breaking down over at Public Works garbage trucks, et cetera? This is what I need to know, because I'm getting numerous complaints, you know, from people saying that they coming around later and later and later and not picking it up day after I...
I'm going to have Jeff come up, sir, and see if we can see where we are. I know we are having a couple problems with two trucks.
Frankly, Jeff Levergut, Director of Public Works, frankly, it must be cyclical. We have had problems in the last week or so with some broken-down trucks. Prior to that, though, we'd been caught up for probably a good two months. But just this week, we've had, for example, three out of four automated trucks down, so we've been, we've been behind this week, behind. You'll also notice that one of the things that helped us catch up, if you look at the bids over $10,000, one of the things that we've done has rented equipment. So that helped us to catch up. We're anticipating four new vehicles that we purchased this year that are new to the fleet, they'll be arriving in August. That's going to be helping us considerably. And we've also put the four new employees on that you authorized in the current budget, and that's helped considerably. So, the cup is more than half-full right now for us.
I noticed you, I was doing real well, and then you started, you know, getting, looked like Lexi Daisy, but I know you had something to break down, you know. Just call me, tell me, say something broke down, you know, I don't mind putting the word out. Thank you. I'm good.
All right. We have a motion to approve.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, no code compliance or legal settlements, moving on to public hearing. Propose ordinance number 17-014, first reading.
May I ask a question? Since we changed code to some other standard, do we still want to use that word code, compliance?
Nope, Judy's working on changing that to community standards on the agenda, the title you're talking about, sir. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, first reading ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Licensing and the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, Definitions, Chapter 3, Article 4, Use Regulations, and Chapter 4, Article 5, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements, Providing Necessary Updates, New Standards and Justifications for the Accommodation and Regulation of Group Homes and Parking Requirements for Single and Two-Family Dwelling Units Provided for Acceptance, Providing for Conflict Severability Codification, and an Effective Date.
What we going to do tonight? Will this affect that house that Mrs. Oria was talking about?
It's possible.
Possible? Okay, go.
All right, I was thinking about colors. When you asked me that question, mentioned her name. I'm still pondering that. Evening, Mike from Planning Zone Director, here to bring fairly complex, a very important item to you this evening. How we got here today? I've got a thorough slideshow to guide us. If I spend too much time on a topic you're familiar with, or not enough on one you're not familiar with, please indicate accordingly. We know how we got where we are today. It's a very popular buzzword in the media and actions nationally as well as state and locally, particularly locally, and probably Delray is probably somewhat pleased here. There's another city in the nation that's getting a little more attention with respect to drug overdose and attention. Until then, I think New York Times was labeling Delray Beach as a hotspot, and they somewhat still are by statistics. But anyway, how we arrived where we are today? A combination of things, obviously. Criminal activity, drug overdoses, and health issue that relates to that. Complaints, neighborhood impacts, corruption, question over concentration. A moratorium was in effect between January 17th and June 4th, during which time staff conducted a zoning study. Of course, we continue to be asked by the media or others, how many group homes, sober houses, do we have within the city? And we have somewhat of an estimate, because our records have not always identified what types of group homes are which, or what their clients are. Next, objectives and challenges, as I've stated in prior presentations, giving you updates on our process or progress. Evaluate existing regulations or processes, of course, being very aware of what federal requirements we need to follow and adhere to. Of course, maintaining good zoning order. Social responsibility is, of course, very important, particularly given the fact of the opioid and drug addiction, and alcohol addiction problems that society experiences. And of course, the objective is to preserve neighborhood character. And as I go on to indicate, really, it's kind of, that's important for both sides. This isn't us versus them. This is staff really trying to present to you what's important in terms of regulations that benefit the society in general. And what that does at the same time is it preserves neighborhood character for both those traditional families, as well as the group home clients, if you will, and residents that have been sent to and by the Supreme Court to local cities to be mainstreamed into the community, such and experience the same thing that we oftentimes desire by that traditional neighborhood and what goes along with it. Socially, 2015 APA study indicated some facts about the aging population. Of course, this, the study that this involves addresses both homes accommodating those in sobriety treatment programs and drug treatment programs, as well as the elderly. And both populations are high. And as we've been, we've learned for a long time, population is aging. 65 and over, 4% in 1900, and predicted to be 21% in 2050. We need to accommodate them also. Interestingly, fewer and fewer are aging, if you will, into the traditional nursing homes and under formal nursing care. More of them are seeking the aging in place concept, not staying where they are and trying to maintain the necessary services and treatments without going into the institutions. What does that mean? That means that more and more will be seeking smaller settings, group homes, if you will. And we need to accommodate those. Considerations, somewhat started addressing the issue of the federal requirements, and you'll hear over and over, you have heard over and over in the media regarding compliance with the Federal Housing Act, as well as the American with Disabilities Act. Standards must be neutral, meaning we cannot overly regulate a group home versus a conventional home. Standards must not discriminate. We know what that means. We cannot segregate such uses in institutional settings. These seem, nowadays, this seems obvious, but there's many jurisdictions that have been, have lost lawsuits in court when they've tried to do just that, some of the very more well-known cases. Intent or effect, our regulations, cities' regulations may not necessarily intentionally discriminate, but it could have the effect of discriminating. That's something we need to be aware of, and the courts are very sensitive to. We need to provide reasonable accommodation. That can be viewed two different ways. And of course, legal precedents, regulating unrelated individuals, and that generally We want to base our actions on factual evidence. Something else the courts are very sensitive to is discriminating remarks by staff, elected officials, and the public. We need to stick as factual as possible. And I'll address a little bit about distance separations. Considerations, I won't go through each one of these, but obviously there is a wealth of information out there. And as you noticed, if you just skimmed down the side of the different dates, there are some very recent resources, very thorough, that address this topic. Obviously, this is a regional and state, national issue, particularly here in South Florida, so the information is really available. Isn't as if we are doing anything in the dark. And as recently as the past month, Delray Beach acquired an expert to do a study for them, and that study was reviewed. Not to mention, reports have come out from the federal government, Department of Justice, HUD, and as well as Palm Beach County Grand Jury Report, which had its recommendations pretty much implemented into 2017, well, once it gets signed, if it hasn't already, 2017 law in the state legislature.
Excuse me, the report that was done for Delray, did you see it?
I did.
Thank you.
Some of our proposed amendments, here's a little bit of our meat. Updating definitions, we are removing some discriminatory effect of those regulations or definitions of our four different types of group homes, converting them into three different types of group homes, mostly by size, as well as the magnitude of services. In other, we want to regulate these for zoning purposes. So what's the intensity of them? What are their best environments with respect to compatibility and similarity? More importantly than, who is the resident? Require all group homes to be certified. This is the foundation, really, of staff's recommendations for regulations. This is imperative. This does a couple things. Number one, it teams up with the state, who has been using, who started using last year, the Florida Association of Recovered Residents as the reviewing entity in their voluntary system for group homes. Teaming up with them, someone, group home wanting to come into the city not only has to deal with the state's condition, if they want referrals for residents from state-licensed service entities, whether it's counselors, doctors, treatment centers, IOPs, PHPs, it must be a certified home by far. So if we also have the requirement, you know, there's just more and more energy there and requirement or influence to have those homes certified. It also takes the burden off of staff to review for such technical things, such as background checking, organizational operation, management. Are they serving a protected client? Are they, are they acting the functional equivalent of a family? Those are important things, and those are things that the federal government has said that are necessary in order to be supported. Maximum two persons per bedroom, up to 10 maximum. Right now, we have a maximum flat rate of six persons per type 1 group home. This is increasing it. Again, I preface this by saying it's a certified requirement. These homes are overseen, certified, and operated according to quality standards of both the national entity, as well as the Florida entity, FARR. This also standardizes our regulations. We have building codes, and we have land development regulations that are based upon size of a bedroom, that determines how many can be in it. So this is more of a neutral standard, getting away from the flat rate, which may be a little more difficult to justify. Type 2 group homes are those up to 15, that's limited to the R2 and higher zoning districts like R3. If it is an R2, if it's in an R2 zoning district, it must be on a higher classification roadway. That keeps that larger home out of the single-family neighborhoods and being impacted by perhaps possible greater traffic. Type 3 facilities are allowed in, would be allowed in the R3 zoning district, conditional use would be required, and of course, on higher classified streets. Again, higher intensity, higher classification roadways. Type 3 group homes are proposed to also be allowed in the mixed-use 1, 2, and 3 zoning districts. Specifically, this is to start addressing a topic that's becoming popular in the planning world and zoning regulations, and that is, again, like I mentioned a little bit before, it isn't perfectly aging in place, but it's called, there's another term for it, which basically is continuum of care of services, so it allows those to be in mixed-use districts. Again, there's a condition here to keep it more compatible with mixed-use districts, and that is 60% must be a conventional unit, so it's a combination. Stop me anytime if there's a question on any of these. It's a little bit abbreviated due to the magnitude of information I have to present, and of course, you have all the backup in the report. Staff proposes to reduce down the distance separation from 1,000 feet, which has been on the books for several years, but most recently found non-defensible and inconsistent with the federal requirements, down to 300 feet. There seems to be a, well, it isn't new necessarily, because the APA published an article in the late 90s that talked about distance separations, and most recently in studies, as well as the Delray study I just referenced. Why that is, again, gets back to the principle of preserving the nature and character of a single-family neighborhood, which the federal government says is important for mainstreaming individuals back into the community. Well, if you have clustering, if you will, of group homes, you have the potential for taking away some of those characteristics that we're targeting. So I think that this is defensible, and it is logical to apply some type of standard to prevent the clustering of them in a given area. Increased parking requirements. I think you heard a speaker earlier talk about parking congestion in a single-family driveway. And what, this is as a neutral standard. It applies to all residential uses, single-family uses, not just a group home. But it does make sense it goes along with it, because we're allowing more residents in a group home. We need to make sure that we've got proper accommodations for them, particularly parking. We do not know who will be driving. We are, it's been indicated to us that many of those residents of group homes are not drivers at that time, but we don't have any assurance of that. And this changes and increases the parking requirements. And of course, to prevent the front lawn from being paved, to accommodate the additional parking requirements, if you have more bedrooms than what your parking spaces could accommodate, we've got a limit on that, too. Some attributes, I've mentioned some of these already, but just to go through them. Standardizes a system for reviewing group homes, using the FAR system or FAR certification requirements. Recognizes, it's a recognized and reputable oversight, using that agency, as I've mentioned. Certification reply, really, something else that's notable is, all of our group homes in the city, regardless of what the group is, whether it's the elderly or other special groups, whether it's battered women, things like that, they all require some type of certification or approval or licensing of the state, whether it's ACA or Division of Family and Children, except for group homes. And this is still, although it's a protected class, if you will, and individuals are identified as being disabled, they do not have the oversight. So I think that's... So I think this is fair treatment, if you will, to have some type of oversight similar to the other clients and residents of other types of group homes. It's a more standardized maximum person requirement versus just a flat number of six or 14 supportive, it supports a needed use, as we've indicated. There is a need for treatment, community housing, group housing, so forth, and this is supported by the increased zoning districts, increased number of residents, and of course, oversight, which is helping to make sure that they are run properly. Distance separation standard is much reduced, it's more reasonable, and it increases our compliance with federal requirements, in staff's opinion. Closing remarks. These are new regulations, new to us, venturing in an area that has been uncharted, if you will. We'll be monitoring them over time, as we've done other regulations that need to be tested and maintained for satisfying our objectives. Success really equals credible operations and appropriate standards. Certification is the foundation, as I've emphasized during previous slides. We have a reasonable accommodation process in place. If that's not, if that's not a term that you're familiar with, reasonable accommodation is something that's required by the federal government. So what is reasonable, it's not always easy to define, it's not clearly analytical, but it's something we need to be very careful of. If someone is housing or providing a service to a protected class of individual, they have the rights to come to us and be reviewed for it. If one of our other standards would deny them and their business model or whether they're proposing access into the city. That was an ordinance adopted implementing those requirements in application process in 2013. We'll be going back and updating that for consistency with the direction we're heading. Really, if these regulations refuse someone access and they wanted to have reconsideration, if you will, we would have to use a reasonable accommodation process. Now, obviously, we're proposing a fairly structured process, some new regulations, maximum person, certification requirement, distance separations, so forth. Most importantly, the certification process. So could someone come to us and apply for reasonable accommodation if we deny their original application because they don't have certification? They could. And I think what staff needs to do is have some of the same criteria and quality standards built into our process to review them against if they basically have, not abiding by the other standards, such as certification. And we'll be reviewing that and coming back to you in the near future with an updated reasonable accommodation ordinance if we need to. This is not addressing really thoroughly the short-term or vacation rental issue. That may need further time in updating, or time to review of our regulations and back before you with changes if necessary. And we just note here, this public hearing process started before the moratorium had expired, and we would just have notified public when that was going to expire, but it has as of June 4th. And this ordinance, if on schedule, would be back before you on July 18th for final reading. That concludes my presentation. First questions?
Mike, just a few questions that I have regarding the distance separation. So I know you said 1,000 was not supported by case law, but do we have to go all the way down to 300? Is there a sweet spot in the middle that we can negotiate or something?
And staff has opened your recommendations. That was a number, I mean, what is 300? I'm not going to say it's arbitrary, but something higher, the farther you go, the higher you go, the more you have to defend it.
So in essence...
If you take, clustering to me is home abutting home abutting home or across the street, clustering around a corner, that's clustering. And this would basically prevent, 300 feet would prevent clustering.
About 300 feet is a radius, correct?
That's correct.
They can't be within 300 feet, so whether it's across the street or next to each other, they can't be within 300 feet. And 300 feet is about, what's that distance in relative terms?
Approximately four lots in a conventional neighborhood.
About four homes.
Our lot sizes range between 60 and 75 feet. Some larger districts would have 100, but that's more, more typical would be 60 to 75 lot frontages.
That's about four homes separation between sober...
Right. And of course, too, it's going property boundary to property boundary. Doesn't, the whole lot does not have to be enveloped into it to be subject to that separation.
My question is, is that, so, is it defensible to kind of have it one per block? Because with this, you know, I'm on, the Northeast Third that I'm on, is that if there's on one on the west side of the road, there could be another one on the east side of the road, because there's still on, there's still 300 feet separation. You know, is it, in your opinion, is it defensible to have, to make it more of one per block or the 300 feet?
Yeah, if you looked at plat maps for the city, block sizes range significantly.
Okay.
You could have some small ones, 500 feet, 600 feet long, you could have some that are very long.
And that's kind of why I chose mine, is because it's right across the street from here. It's probably one of the oldest ones here. And so that's, you know, I think mine's probably like 500 feet.
Yours is probably more traditional, a block. We have some areas that are more elongated.
Right.
So one block could be 10, 12, 15, 20 blocks.
And, you know, the difference between the streets and the avenues, you know, regarding what Commissioner Romulus said, because I'm using my block as a guiding point, I would try to, you know, go to 400 feet and then max 500 feet, so that it is more of a one per block, or, and that, you know, would be, and that's with, by the width, and then you would go, I guess, two blocks sometimes with the north or south. Because, you know, when you have, because we are in the grid format, that, you know, something on Northeast Third Avenue means that you can't have something on Northeast Fourth Avenue, but you could do it on Northeast Fifth Avenue.
Sure. Like was already asked, it's a radius. You're drawing a circle. It's going to cross, could cross one or more streets.
Consensus from the board to agree on a number outside of 300?
Commissioner, not at this particular time. As you note from the calendar, we have an additional period of time between first and second reading. And I think it would be better for the commission to make its comments and concerns and express its concerns, and let staff go back and look at the numbers that they've selected and determine whether something above what they have recommended tonight has a rational basis and could be applied without a successful challenge. So I would ask that you just express your points of view tonight, but not take a vote on any particular consensus on any of these points.
So I guess, Michael, it's, you know, like you said, there's such a range of blocks. Can you look, you know, basically around, I guess, kind of the old Boynton where, you know, Ocean Avenue was kind of the main street more thorough for, so look closely in, I guess, the District III area to see what would work best regarding that as a basis to make it the block?
We can do that. Not only are there, we can, we can study, but not only are there varying block sizes, but also configurations. So you're thinking of traditional block.
Yeah.
But there might be finger canals along the coastal waterway or along canals within the city. We'd have to construe that that equals one block. You could have 15 lots on one small finger street, so that'd be one block, so that's one per 15 lots.
And that's kind of what I'm not asking, I'm kind of asking, using the old plats of the, traditional plats of what Boynton Beach is as the basis, not the variance, not the variances, but the different ones when you're talking about things, homes on canals or where there are, you know, diagonal streets.
Like, in the same line, we have group residents, whatever you want to call them now, on Northeast Fourth Street, I'm just saying, when, we have some already position around, I'm just saying, you all need to check this, because I'm just saying, there are some a butt behind, one is on one street, one is backing up to the next street, and I'm just saying, down the block, you have another one, at the next corner, you got another one, so you probably need to look at where they're already stationed at, because I'm just saying, because what we're doing now, if we start looking at that, some of these places are going to have to move over off of Fourth Street, not that I mind.
Sure. It's a good point, and that brings us to another topic of questions or brief overview, if you will, and that's, what do we do, what happens to the existing ones? We really only want to talk about those which are legally approved at this time through proper, our approval process, zoning and business tax receipt, certificate of use process. What happens to those? Will they be grandfathered by these, these types of standards, distance separations? What we are proposing in the regulations, you probably saw, is that a certification requirement will still apply to them. So we propose one year, one, let's say, one licensing period or certificate of use period to obtain FAR certification. That would address existing ones, they would have to do that. Otherwise, we would put them through code compliance process, or they're not compliant. But as far as the existing ones, they're in place, if they don't comply with the distance separation, they'd be grandfathered until they cease to operate or business tax receipt expires.
You're saying that what we're doing is bringing them up to higher standards, and this will increase the quality of operations, but it would reduce the emergency calls. How would you all measure that, and what time period would you all measure? There would be one year saying that this is working and it's not working, you know, what's your timeframe?
We'd probably chop it down a little quicker, but as soon as we feel like things are being implemented. How, who knows? After these are adopted, how many are going to be coming in and following suit? We do know there are some waiting. We've collected some applications during the moratorium process, awaiting processing once this is completed. But I would say we'll be taking a look at that as early as six months instead of one year out, but probably six-month increments.
Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to applaud you and your staff for putting this together. It's a delicate process, because obviously, the considerations of those who occupy these group homes in any, you know, incarnation, whether it's those who are elderly, those who are infirm, disabled physically or intellectually, those that suffer from addiction, it's, like I said, it's a delicate tightrope to walk, but I think it's extremely important that we set these restrictions and pick up the slack where the state has, has failed, you know, to regulate these properly. I think that it's, it's important to note that, you know, while recovery residences kind of steal the spotlight, the potential for abuse purely for the sake of profit by operators of these group homes will affect anyone who occupies them, whether they are, again, elderly or disabled people, intellectually disabled, it spans the spectrum, where at some point, you have to say that, given the conditions that are observed in some of these group homes, that restrictions have to be placed. You know, the customers, those people who are seeking help in these homes tend to be the most vulnerable people in society who are suffering from afflictions or addiction. And, you know, it's the job of government to protect, protected classes, so I, again, I applaud you on your, on your efforts in coming up with this, and I think that it's just to the benefit of the current residents who are looking for some degree of continuity in their neighborhoods, and more importantly, maybe, for the people who enter into these group homes expecting for assistance or recovery or care, and then are kind of short-changed or potentially abused. Most of the horror stories that you hear on the news pertaining to elderly or disabled or addicted individuals stem from abuses at these types of facilities purely for the sake of profit and enriching those who operate them. So I can't say it enough, I applaud you and your team for their efforts, and I look forward to approving this and getting this on the books so that we can protect people who deserve it.
I'll piggyback Vice Mayor Katz's comments. Again, you know, you guys have been top-notch in terms of getting back to us with so many different changes or regulations to the LDRs that we've been making over the past few months, so thank you for all your diligence and your work.
All of that motion to approve.
Back in.
Do you have a public question?
Any public input?
Yes.
Sister Lorraine Ryan, 912 Southeast Fourth Street, Women's Circle. Across the street from us, we have two existing, I presume it's the same company for soberhouses. They, whatever your distance is, they're very close. I mean, they're right next door to each other. They've been there for over a year. On our side of the street, we have a duplex that has, was up for sale, then it went down, and now I'm noting that the moratorium is up. So I'm wondering, is that going to be a duplex that could be bought by this soberhouse owner? Then another question I have is about surveillance. How is, how is the police department kind of regularly seeing whether, in fact, drugs are being handed over? We've got a lovely median on that street. I observed, granted, it was only one time, a man standing there receiving a bag from a car passing by. I happened to be waiting for that car to move on so I could park at Women's Circle. So, you know, I'm wondering, you know, what is the element of surveillance in this as well? Thank you very much. I commend you for all that you are doing regarding this.
And since it is only the first reading, we will come back next time with the answers to those questions. The other thing that, speaking of the surveillance issue, I know that the Florida statute has certain requirements for convenience stores with surveillance. Is there anything that you've seen regarding that or can research to have some sort of surveillance for the residents, or is there anything with the other types of certifications with ACHA or the Department of Children's and Family?
Surveillance meaning?
Surveillance being cameras, you know, for the resident's protection, almost.
I'm not the expert on that, but I know that there's privacy issues.
Okay.
In fact, if we were going to even inspect a sober home, most, most cases would require, I think the requirements, privacy requirements would require them to be absent from the home when we went and inspected it. So there is some privacy and anonymity.
Okay.
I checked with Delray, I'm just kidding.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello is absent, the vote is 4-0.
Moving on to Item B, approved conditional use request for the stockpiling of landscape debris for recycling purposes on the vacant parcel north of 301 Southeast 10th Avenue in the M1 zoning district applicant Joe Magnano, Magnano Tree Care.
Conditional use is quasi-judicial. If you intend to testify, please raise your right hand. Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, and this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Christian Magnano from Magnano Tree Care. We're second and third generation landscapers here in Boynton Beach. My dad can't be here tonight, but he started his business in 88, my grandfather in 76, and I came on board after graduating University of Florida in 2015. So we've been in Boynton for a while, you've probably seen our trucks. We've got two locations in the city, one off of East Industrial Avenue, another right here off Southeast Second Street, and we employ approximately 90 people. About 82 of them reside within the Boynton Beach city limits. So the site in question is basically a spot that we bring our lawn debris, we stockpile it there, where it's then picked up to be recycled. At the end of the day, the recycled material is bought back by us as well as the consumers at Home Depot Lowes in the form of topsoil, and so it's pretty much a full-circle application. So I'll just flip through here. This is the entrance way. We've got a gate that stays locked up during the day, our guys have access to it via keys at the office. They come inside, dump their material, the pile itself, you'll see here, it's centralized on the piece of property so that we have fire access all the way around. We also have proper irrigation over the top, water coverage just to keep the pile from, from getting too hot. The pile itself is also turned daily, sometimes more than that, in order just to make room for the loads that keep coming all day. We have approximately 22 trucks on the road, so we fill it up kind of quick. Around the property, we've put in arica palms that will keep maintaining at about 12 to 15 foot, pretty much just to create a buffer, so you don't have to, don't have to look at it, also just creates a buffer, a noise barrier as well. Here's just another one of the, a shot of the access, fire access, where you can go all the way around. Here's the pile, you can see the PVC pipes on the top of the, on top of the... Here's the pile, you can see the PVC pipes on the top of the two-by-twos there in the corner. That's the agreed height we've come to to keep the pile at or below. And like I said, when we're pushing and turning the pile, that's always our goal is keeping it under that. Here's part of the irrigation. We also have a mobile unit that we place on top of the pile just to keep everything cooled down and properly covered, fences along the railroad tracks. This is our machine that we use, Kubota tractor. We just use it to push the material around, keep it turned. So that's it. If you have any questions or any comments?
Quick question, what is the current height limit?
I believe that we said at 11 feet. Is that correct? 10, 10 feet, 10 feet.
All right, so we've got to make sure that it's 10 feet.
10 feet, yep. So we've just been keeping it underneath the PVC.
Anything from the board?
Just that I went to the site and was showed around a couple of months back and since, you know, there was an initial complaint by an adjacent property owner, but I haven't heard anything since some of these standards have been put in place and it seems to be smooth operating and well-maintained and tended to by the business owners. So I'm supportive of this. Like you said, they employ a lot of people in the city, they do their business, and they go home and it doesn't appear to really be disturbing anybody. So it seems like the appropriate use for a parcel that's adjacent to a railroad track and otherwise might not really be used for anything else.
You know, it is a green energy, green economy of composting, so I appreciate that making Boynton Beach a little bit healthier.
I have no comments, I'm going to offer a motion to approve this.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none, conditional use approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Items C and D have been withdrawn by the applicant. Moving on to item E, approve the request for master site plan modification for retail building one of the Quantum Park and Village South mixed-use pod, including a request for Plant Industrial Development District waiver to reduce the side setback along the west side of retail building one from 15 feet to five feet on 14.27 acres located at 1080 Gateway Boulevard in the Plant Industrial Development Zoning District. Applicant Dale Lyon, Olin Development Corp.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lyon. I represent Olin Properties and Olin Development Corp. I'm Director of Construction and Development for Florida. We're here tonight requesting a minor site plan modification, reducing the setback from 15 feet to five feet and to increase the building footprint from 4,000 square feet to 4,025 square feet. Quantum Park, Quantum Town Center. It's a mixed-use property. This is actually the last retail building in this plaza. We're excited about finally developing it. It's at idle for a while, but I think the economy has certainly turned around enough so we can develop now with confidence and lease this out to an upscale tenant. The pad is actually in place. The pad's a super pad, so at initial construction, all of the underground infrastructure was put in place. So all the roads, parking, traps, water, fire is existing. It's been there for approximately seven years. This will be upscale waterfront dining on one of the lakes in the Quantum Park. There will also be a pier that will have outside dining. A good portion of the restaurant will have outside dining with a covered patio. And, oh, here we go. That is the elevation shot. We don't have any tenants right now. We've been approached by several upscale potential tenants, but until we get this approved, we can't really negotiate to bring anyone in. That's it.
May I ask you a question? What is the purpose of requesting a setback from 15 feet to five feet?
Well, that's to increase the outside seating area. There was a portion of the covered patio and roof that would have been encroaching into an existing easement, and this will allow us to avoid that.
Right, and I just need to ask staff, I'm not, I'm in favor of doing it, but I'm just saying there's no utilities or anything that this will affect. You know, when we do easements, we have to be careful, make sure that's nothing underground.
Yeah, initially, there were two old easements in place, and that was negotiated about four years ago that those would be vacated. We have two new easements in place with easement owners in Quantum Park Overlay Development District. You know, the former vacations have already been recorded with the county. There's nothing encroaching at all. You know, even the drainage, even the site and building drainage doesn't drain into the lake, so everything will be siphoned off into a field drain and, you know, to keep away from erosion, so.
Question of the staff, you all are in favor of this?
Staff does recommend approval of the request. The PID waiver that they are requesting really has no impact on surrounding properties or residents as it does back up to the lake, so staff is in favor of the request. Ed Brice, Principal Planner.
All right.
Sorry.
You know, one of my concerns is that it is next to a lake. Mosquitoes sometimes happen to be in standing bodies of water. Is there any going to be some sort of mosquito control on the property?
Well, we're not the tenant, we're just building the structure. I mean, that would be generally handled by the tenant, and usually they put in the modular, you know, mobile mosquito abatement things. But we do spray the property for pest control.
That's what I wanted to make sure that...
Absolutely. Right now, the main problem is iguanas. You know, I'm not sure about the mosquitoes, but the number of iguanas out there is startling.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few questions in terms of safety, being there right next to the lake, are there safety parameters being put in place as you build this structure?
Currently, there's a vegetation border, you know, that we're not allowed to touch, and there's an existing fence on the property right now and a retaining wall along the west side. This also butts our residential community, Quantum Lake Villas, and, you know, these properties have been in place for a number of years, and I don't believe there's been any incidents. But with bringing in a restaurant, a potential tenant, you know, if there was a need for any other type of fencing or barrier or barricade, we would certainly, you know, consider that. But as of right now, it's just a landscape border and lake maintenance easement.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm excited when this came up. If you've kind of paid attention to these shopping centers in Quantum on the north and south side of Gateway, I think just the timing that they were built and the market conditions, a lot of these areas stayed vacant and there was not businesses, and it was a brand-new, real-nice shopping center on both sides of the road. And I think, you know, as a testament to the economic strength of the city, over the past couple of months to a year in particular, there have been a flood of new businesses entering these two shopping centers, and they're busy, you know, all the time. So I'm excited that this is not only a new building being constructed, but also it's an innovative concept by allowing this lakeside eating, which, you know, is always a popular kind of attraction when you're able to eat at restaurants that offer you the outside seating. So I'm ecstatic about it, and I think it just, again, it points to the economic strength of not just the shopping centers, but of Boynton Beach that more and more businesses are seeking to locate here, and it's doing great things for the city.
Mayor, if I may, just in summary, staff and the Planning and Development Board both recommend approval of this. There are seven conditions of approval, which the applicant has agreed to.
My question is motion to approve.
Do we need to open for comment? Yep.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I think this is a fabulous idea and build, baby, build.
All right, build.
Motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none, motion approves, is approved. Next proposed ordinance number 17-015, first reading. Jim?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending the Land Development Regulations amending Chapter 2, 3, and 4 to continue the implementation of the Community Redevelopment Plan with the establishment of a new cultural district overlay zone, regulating site development standards, zoning uses and urban design standards, providing for conflict-severability codification and an effective date.
Hello, Amanda Basile, Senior Planner with the Development Staff. We are going to be looking at two overlays. My presentation is together, there's a separating slide, so if we want to go through the whole presentation and do two separate votes, just stop me if that's what we're going to do. So as you might remember, in October of last year, we passed the, adopted the Boynton Beach Redevelopment Plan, and within that, we outlined several implementation steps. P4 outlined two of the things that we are bringing in front of you today, which is the adoption of the Boynton Beach Boulevard overlay and the adoption and revision of the Ocean Avenue overlay. So we are going to start with the cultural district overlay zone. Cultural district is along Ocean Avenue, and it runs from Seacrest to the FEC, and it goes north to Northeast 1st Avenue and south to Southeast 2nd Avenue. The regulations are comprised in nine different steps, and we will go through each one of the steps and kind of summarize what's located in each one. The first being the purpose and intent of the overlay. I'd like to remind you the difference between overlays on and a zoning district. The overlay sits over your zoning district, so it will, all of the development standards are still held within the zoning district, and the overlay sits over them. So the purpose and intent of this specific district would be to first initiate some of the implementations of the CRA plan and improve overall livability along with concentrating certain types of businesses and some uses that were envisioned in the plan. So one of the main differences between an overlay and a zoning district is zoning districts can be used anywhere in the city in most cases, and overlays are tied to a geographic location, being the cultural district here. Conflict would just cover that if there are any conflicts with any of the other regulations, this overlay would take precedence. So getting into some of the regulations, we cover uses. This adds a list of prohibited uses into this geographic area. Things like car lots with streets, with cars lining the streets would be prohibited. Big box retail with parking in front would be prohibited.
Regarding the prohibited uses, I saw that college seminary university, so you're saying there won't be a university of Boynton in the cultural zone?
Unfortunately. We did, there are a couple of education uses that we did leave open that could be a little bit more urban.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So the modified building standards, this houses the most of the development regulations in it. There are several components to it, from lot area to building frontages to scale and setbacks. We're going to highlight two of the newer concepts, which is the pedestrian zone and the scale and height. So the pedestrian zone is comprised of three parts, first being the street trees, a street tree area adjacent to a sidewalk, which is adjacent to an active area. Not all three portions are required on all roads. Depending on which road you're on, you would be required to do all three or just two of The reason why we're implementing this is because it promotes things like this, outdoor dining, walking, pedestrian scale activity, and outdoor merchandise. The second would be scale and height. Like I said, this sits over zoning districts, so the overlay does not dictate overall height requirements, that is still housed under your zoning districts. What this does do is create a cap at the street level on certain roads. So this example would be on Ocean Road, on Ocean Avenue, the cap is 35 feet before you have to start doing some certain setbacks in design. We cover some accessory structures. One example that we have listed is that we adapted some fence regulations that would promote pedestrian activity. And the same goes with some of the signage regulations. We added some pedestrian scale signage and prohibited some of the larger-scale vehicular signage.
And, excuse me, is that blue writing up there that I can't see?
No, that's not important. We did all that already. I do have some printouts if it would be easier to see.
I'm good, I'm good. It's just like it was up there.
Everything that's grayed out, we've already covered.
All right.
So the last thing which is new in this overlay is the idea of building design, which actually came up today. We are promoting some coastal village-style architecture, which is starting to become prominent in the area. We are not proposing guidelines, but we are kind of proposing the, we're initiating a theme within the cultural district. This, what we're proposing, the coastal village architecture comes from the Key West vernacular and some bungalow styles. For some examples, local examples, this is Delray Beach on Federal, I believe, it's a residential unit. This is another local example, this is Lake Worth, and this is Abacoa, this would be a more commercial example. So the last, we have two more portions, oh no, this is the last one, parking. So this is already in existence. We added a couple more standards for screening of parking areas and where they would be allowed to fit on the site. And we're also, which is already in the code already, required spaces can be reduced up to 50% for new development, excluding residential projects. So this is just a diagram of what that would do to the district. Anything that you see in that pink color becomes a main road, so these roads would require the full pedestrian zone. The green becomes what I'm calling connector streets, which allows people to walk comfortably between your main roads. And then the blue ends up being the back of house. Should I keep going into Boynton Beach, or do you want to do questions on one at a time? Keep going, okay. Oh, you have a question?
Just like you said, you know, it's something I talked about in the past, Susan brought it up today, and there's, you know, guidelines as to the architecture and the design of these buildings. You think this would be an opportune, not right now, but moving forward, it would be an opportune time then to discuss the creation of an architectural review committee?
Possibly. I think that we've kind of heard the public say that this is what they want to see in this specific area, but through the town square project, I'm sure this is going to be discussed over and over again. Anything else on the cultural district before moving forward?
Oh, I got one.
Sure.
The initial setback, does that allow for or permit, like, usable space on top of the setback portion? Like, say someone wanted to create, you know, a patio, or if it was a two-story restaurant with a dining area upstairs, could they have outdoor dining on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You mean the 30-foot step back in the building?
Yeah, like the roof of that step back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Amanda, have we also implemented anything with living walls or anything in these structures?
Not within the overlay. I know that discussion comes up a lot when the arts theme comes up, because they do have to put a percentage of their actual site plans into the arts, the arts committee, which goes to them, but usually that's when we bring up that discussion. One of the other items that was in the implementation step that we went over first, though, is to review sustainable guidelines in the code, so that will be one of the next tasks that staff takes on.
and you know, and everything's going to start with us anyway. I'm just trying to figure out, why are we creating another committee?
Well, we are not creating another committee, just yet.
I know, I know we're not, but this is what keeps coming up, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know.
My, my intent behind it is just with, with all the development downtown, I know that there are objections by many residents, and I feel like a lot of times, the objections come, you know, as much in the form of height and density as appearance. And in lieu of what you even said today, that in, in past years, the commission had been given color swatches and the opportunity to kind of weigh in explicitly on those types of things. I guess that's kind of fallen the wayside, so this would have citizen input as to that, and we could kind of not be bogged down in those details. We could get recommendations on colors and facades and materials of that nature. So at least if we're, if we're building structures that, that some might not find palatable because of their size and intensity, the appearance could be crafted by citizens directly through that input and possibly give them a little more comfort in, in the potential development.
Amanda, so regarding the color scheme, I'm colorblind, so it doesn't really affect me. But do we have all the colors available that the city will approve?
City doesn't have an approved color palette, per se, but when they do come in through site plan approval, they are still required to provide color samples and color swatches and material boards. I believe that the practice is still there to bring those to the city commission approval hearings. I'm, I believe that there's still practice? Yeah, it, again, there's no actual set guidelines, but we-
What did you say, Mike? Because I'm just saying, I remember was here, when it was, we was doing it. We was looking at them like in the buildings.
Mike, we're planning zoning director. Our architectural or color standards in our LDRs right now are more of a compatibility standard. In other words, what, if there are adjacent themes, colors, characteristics in a given area where a project is proposed, and if it's desirable, we'll look for compatibility with those themes and colors within the budding area. But that's, that's, that's not, we don't have a mandated color palette, so we don't have a lot of teeth, if you will, or guidance to guide colors.
Can we have the final color to come through the board?
Well, they do. It is part of the site plan review. We require color samples, chips.
So, so that-
So that is approved as part of the project. So when someone comes in to change colors, we review that in accordance with our major minor review criteria.
So for example, one Boynton, we didn't get that review of the new color scheme, because that was a minor?
It may have been a minor change. I do not recall exactly the colors that originally came in.
Okay.
When it goes back to their own marketing groups, things can change.
So, so I'm, so what I'm, I guess we're requesting is, is that any new development within the cultural overlay or Boynton Beach overlay come forward with the swatches so that there's approval by the board? And so we can have the public input, which you say we already do?
Do. I think what you need to ask yourselves is, do you want to review any color changes that are proposed in those projects, even though right now, staff has administrative review of minor changes to site plans that may involve colors unless we sense something's really radical and inconsistent with what was reviewed initially?
You're missing it. I'm just saying-
So the question is, is that is a color change considered minor or major?
In most cases, it would be considered minor.
And so, you know, it's a question of if that, if there's somebody who wants to redo their, a minor site plan modification, we will not see the new color?
Apparently, that's correct.
Is that okay with the board?
Make sure we're, are we talking about general, as part of the process?
We're talking just in the overlay district right now, to keep it on topic. Yes, Vice Mayor?
He's trying to confuse me, but we used to look at them things when they bring them in here. That's all I'm saying.
And so, so what I'm saying is, is that any new changes in the overlay would be, those colors would be brought in from the board, that it would not be just a minor site plan approved by staff?
I'd be in favor of something like that. It's, you know, I don't want to cross the line into, you know, telling property owners and architects, you know, how to design their buildings. But, you know, we've had a number of instances in the past couple of years, especially in the downtown area, where, you know, it's become, it's become pretty clear that, that some of the color schemes are defiant of the intent of these, these districts and these areas. So yeah, I don't want to, I'm not interested in defining what a building should look like down to the detail of the paint, but there, there are some colors that have been chosen as evident by the repainting of Las Ventanas.
Right.
That, that maybe there needs to be just an additional check by this board or a committee or whatever, just to-
Well, one of the things that would be a little bit different about this overlay zone is that we are stating an architectural theme. We're not overregulating. But with that theme, there are obvious colors that do, that are consistent and are not consistent with it. And since that is in code, staff can review it with a little bit more teeth. Like, we can very plainly say that brown is not a coastal village color. And that, I mean, that is recorded. So things that are paler colors would be consistent, and, you know, harsher colors just wouldn't. So there is a little bit more teeth within the overlay, if that's where the conversation is right now.
So to my understanding, basically, there was, there was nothing on the books prior to now, is what you're saying?
Right. Well, there's, I feel like there's two conversations happening. One is overall what the process is. We always require colors to come in, and we always do a compatibility check. This overlay within the cultural district will require a theme of coastal village architecture. So with that, there is a set of colors within the theme of that architecture that would be appropriate and wouldn't be.
But for your answer, when they, we used to do it before, they used to bring them in, and they would say, this is the building that we're going to build, and this is the color that, you know, and then we would say, yes, we like this color here. We voted on it. I'm, I'm just saying, the record speaks for itself.
All right. And I'd like to see that come back. And so if we can have-
We still require all that, so we can absolutely, maybe it's just been slipping a little bit. We can absolutely make sure that it, that those boards are making it here, because we are getting, we still require them.
Okay. Well, I look forward to seeing them.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Are there any other questions with the cultural district before moving on?
No.
Okay. So this one will go a little bit faster, because we have covered some of the overall topics. This is the Boynton Beach Boulevard overlay zone, and this runs from ninety-five to the FEC, and it goes over Boynton Beach Boulevard about one block north and one block south. So the purpose and intent is similar. This, again, is sitting over a geographic area. It's not specific to zoning. So it is about creating a specific theme that was envisioned in the plan for this area. This stuff hasn't changed. It's the defined area that we went over. If anything is in conflict, this overlay supersedes. It's the same type of thing that we're doing with the uses. We are prohibiting certain uses that are not clearly in line with the specific vision for this area. The example that I put up here was the screening and placement of drive-throughs. And we were doing the same thing with our accessory structures, where we're adapting some of our fence regulations to promote some pedestrian scale activity. So again, the modified building and site regulations covers the bulk of the regulation. The lot area to the frontage to the pedestrian zone, which we did go over. This does have also a scale and height with it that, similar to the Ocean Avenue one, this caps height on Boynton Beach Boulevard to forty-five feet before the building has to step back. The way it's written now, it'd have to be a minimum of ten feet, and every fifty feet above that, that you go would be an additional ten feet. Building design, we do not have a set theme, but we are regulating the building orientation, finetration requirements, which is just another way to say windows, and wall articulation. Parking, we are requiring screening of on-street parking areas, anything that butts the right away. And for our signage, again, we are promoting more pedestrian scale signage that aren't permitted right now, and we are prohibiting the larger scale vehicular sign. If there are any questions?
Yep. Any public input regarding the two overlays?
Andy Falco, DeCarado, three, one-six northwest First Avenue. That district that you just showed, my house is on one side of that. I just wanted to know, I know they had spoken before in regards to possibly taking down the homes or putting them under some kind of different kind of situation, which would be across the street from me, which is adjacent to Boynton Beach Boulevard. And we do have, like, a lot of historical homes on that block, and didn't know if you were thinking of doing something more conducive, keeping it kind of a little old world there, being as, that could be coastal, and just what, what their plans are for that area. I know you said you haven't come up with anything definite, but it will affect me, so I was just trying to inquire.
Would you like me to respond? Yeah. So the historic area, and we are aware that there are, I believe, one that is designated and a couple of others, a couple others that are, can potentially be designated. They are highlighted within the redevelopment plan as a potential historic district. We did have one meeting that the residents came to, and they voted to or not become a historic district, and that didn't pass for the first time. If you are designated, you are still protected. We are not kicking anyone out of their homes. We are not building over anything. This is for redevelopment purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 southeast 27th way. At some point, do I have, can I stop saying that? Because you should know it by now. You guys probably have it memorized. I'm wondering, when we have stuff like this, how come there's no handouts for the public? Because it's-
There are handouts at the back.
There are? Okay. Good. I was wrong. Thank you. Second thing, we, the coastal village theme came up once about a year ago. I don't know that that's necessarily what everyone wants. I think people were saying that we have traditionally been a coastal village kind of town or city, but not necessarily that we want coastal village style architecture. While I believe it is totally appropriate for over by the marina, I don't think as we move further inland, it is appropriate when we have, you know, the Mediterranean style architecture. And that would certainly not look in place with the high school or the children's museum. I think maybe if we're going to pick a style, maybe it should be similar to Mediterranean style and go with that. Not to mention, you know, we have a Meisner City Hall planned, sitting around, and maybe that's what we should be looking for. So I know you want to sit at my charrette table at this this summer, right, Amanda? So, you know, that was my thought, is we, maybe we shouldn't be pushing the coastal village once we hit the cultural and Boynton Beach overlay areas, because that's so much further inland. And I don't know that it's necessarily as appropriate as it would be over by the water east of US one. And I'm guessing Mike wants to kill me about now. And I, maybe I missed it, because I was trying to write something else while you were talking about the pedestrian signs. What did you say? Was that just, like, the height, are we going to do something cute and quaint looking like they do in Europe, where they have fancy little signs outside of each little building, you know, and it gives it a nice atmosphere? Or what are you guys looking at?
Yeah. Primarily, what the code allows now in the overlay are under-story signs, so similar to the ones that you would see in Europe that hang underneath a canopy that is really geared towards the pedestrian and not something bigger scale. So there are size requirements, and it, yes.
Okay.
To make it easy, you could just go back to the picture.
Yeah, so we could do that also. Thank you.
Well, my other question was, is at that point, is, is it going to be a consistent type of sign throughout the city, or are we going to let people do individual signs so that they can be unique and, and give some character?
Well, this is only for the overlay, so it's only for those six blocks.
Right.
And the only thing that we are regulating is we are allowing them. We're before we didn't. And we are regulating the size, but that, that's it for right now.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Behind you, Susan.
Oh, yes. Good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Bonnie Miskel. I'm here to, on behalf of a couple of landowners. And I do have a handout, if I may provide. I've represented private development and property, property owners as well as government. I've, I've also drafted code amendments. They're very challenging to draft, because you have to factor in all the other sections of the code, which are many. So staff did a very good job trying to pull this together, and I applaud you on that. I do have a few comments, though, particularly if your goal is redevelopment. If you'll look at the map that I'm, I just gave you, the, upside down, and I have an extra one for staff. The, you know, this is, this is the potential overlay corridor. And the boxes that are in green are the parcels along Boynton that would conform to the requirements that have been proposed. Everything else does not conform. What is in blue and actually cross-hatched are the parcels of the, one is an owner and another is a contract purchaser that I am representing. Their parcels would not conform. The one on the north side of Boynton Beach Boulevard is a contract purchaser, and they are trying to develop the site with a national retailer. That retailer probably is going to walk away, should this be approved. The, the problem in a redevelopment, in an area that you are trying to redevelop, the users that are coming in, they don't want risk. They don't want additional costs. They don't want to ask for waivers. And I understand that you have the opportunity in this section to apply for waivers. So even as non-conforming parcels, you know, you can ask for waiver from some of the requirements. But if you're trying to get somebody in and under construction quickly, that risk is something that most of them won't take. I'm speaking, one, one example, if you turn, well, is your lot frontage proposal here. Staff has identified in this area for lot frontage of a hundred and fifty feet. If you will look at what looks like this, this is, these are your non-residential categories under the code today. And in this, I've got to get my glasses on. You will, if you go down one, two, three, four, five lines, lot frontage minimums, you see between zero, which is the MI one, or M one, excuse me, you see really between zero and one hundred. One hundred is the REC category. But the majority of them are fifty to seventy-five as minimums. You're going to a hundred and fifty here. More restriction does not encourage redevelopment. Less restriction does. If you'll look at the next sheet here that I've handed out, this is Delray Beach's regulations. On Atlantic, which is one of the corridors that has been identified as being one of the most successful retail corridors, certainly in Florida, their minimum is twenty feet. So big difference, twenty, one hundred and fifty. They, about three years ago, the Treasure Coast came in and presented to them a proposal to amend their code. That's something they didn't change. They didn't change the twenty feet, because they felt it's important to have flexibility on your commercial corridors. This one hundred and fifty foot requirement isn't flexible, and it results in all of those parcels that are not in green being non-conforming, right before you, as you adopt it, they become non-conforming. And they would be required to apply for waiver based on how I read it. So although there are many good things in this proposal, I think there are a few that need some work. The lot frontage is one of them. You never adopt a section of the code that creates more than fifty percent of your parcels as non-conforming. It's just not a good idea, number one. And number two, when you're trying to redevelop and stir new growth in an area, less restriction is better, certainly when it comes to certain demands. Now, do these owners, you know, do they, do they have concerns about additional architectural improvements and, and those types of things? No, they're willing to do that, because they want to see everyone else around them bring up the level of architecture and aesthetics. But when you talk about physical constraints, which these sites on this map have, you know, they have portfolio numbers, they have parcel numbers, they are lots, there is substantial development that's already out there that is existing and old. It makes it very, very difficult to aggregate parcels, to create a lot that conforms to the code. So anyway, those are my comments, and I hope that you'll consider them in moving this board. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question. In regards to Northwest Fourth Street, where they was going to put the Dunkin' Donut, will he be able to do that?
Well, not without waivers.
Without waivers?
Without, and actually quite a few of them.
Well, go see Mike.
Which, which, by the way, they applied already. So staff would probably consider them as a pending application. However, if staff is prudent, which I know they are, they will tell you if, you know, obviously, we'd be coming in after that, should they go forward, which is, is, is not necessarily the case at the moment. They will look at our development and compare it to what is code, and they will tell you, we either can or can't support it on the basis that you just adopted a plan that is inconsistent with what they're doing. So you have to understand that. But if we hadn't applied, they would have had to ask for a lot of waivers. One is the width of the lot, the frontage.
So see, my concern is on Northwest Fourth Street, you know, they look- So see, my concern is on Northwest 4th Street, you know, it looks terrible. That's why we have our, whatever our sign said. It's been down now for over a month now, going on two months. And I've been after the city about, you know, put our sign back up, welcome to rolling green, rolling whatever our thing is. And I'm just saying, and do the bushes and everything, and it looks terrible. And that's why I have to turn and go every night and go home and look at this. And I'm like saying, we had Dunkin' Donuts wanting to come in. And I said, at least we'll get a sign put up there. So I said, and now I'm like getting another setback. So I'm in favor of something coming there that's going to enhance, you know, that street, okay? The fish market that's there, if we go through this, will they have to move?
Well, no, they're, they're non-conform, they'd end up becoming a non-conforming parcel, and they are vested under your code. But if there was fire devastation or hurricane devastation or anything like that where they were eliminated by virtue of a storm, they would have to redevelop in accordance with your code. Or again, they could ask for waivers. And that may be something that staff would recommend, given the circumstances. But again, everything that is not in green upon adoption will become non-conforming unless they aggregate their parcels, they add, they combine parcels in order to do it, which may or may not be feasible. But what it will do is make it a lot harder to develop in a short timeframe, which is what the market is looking for today. All the buyers that are buying out there, and there aren't that many left, do not want to add time or risk in coming into a city. They'll just move on to the next one.
What is, what is the, the frontage that you personally, and I was saying, and that's my staff, but what are you looking for? I know you made comparison to Atlantic Avenue. I don't, I don't necessarily see a parallel between...
No, well, that was extreme.
Well, I would say our, you know, our Ocean Avenue is more akin to what would be our Atlantic Avenue. I view Boynton Beach moving forward as something, you know, on a smaller scale. But like Linton, where you've got a, you've got larger spaces and shopping centers and, you know, the walkability is something we're still focused on. But so what would be, in your eyes, what would be a reasonable amount? Because I wouldn't want to go down to something like 20 or 40, which would foster small development, you know, I think the goal...
You currently allow 50 to 75. 50 is very common in cities that are not the size of a Boca Raton or a Delray, but that are also not the size of, of a, you know, a smaller community, your reasonably large community. You currently have many categories that are 50. And 50 is generally a number that is pretty standard out there. The other thing that you include in this proposal is a percentage requirement where they're requiring 75% of that frontage to be the building, which has its challenges as well. That promotes a larger use and not your little mom and pop, for example, that, you know, and I don't live in Delray, but I just happen to be using that as an example. This is cute little place called the Green Turtle. They would never move into a space that large. So what you have to do then is have each, you know, that, whatever that building is, if it's 150-foot lot and 75% of that is the building, you'd probably need a few users in that building. So you're kind of encouraging a design that is a lot strip-like in size and is not, is a little too big. For example, a Houston's, if the parking is behind it, a Houston's wouldn't even occupy a full 150 feet, you know, if they're forced to put their parking behind. Typically, they don't do that. The parking is on at least two sides of the building. You just have to be careful when you have these numerical limitations and restrictions. But 150 is a very large minimum requirement, particularly when you have already zero and your maximum is 100, and that's your REC category.
When you say REC, you mean?
Recreation.
I think it's rec.
Recreation, yeah. So what, I mean, regarding that specifically, Ms. Miskel is talking about our conventional zoning districts. Our mixed-use districts actually go from 100 feet to 200-foot frontages. And back in our plan, the recommendations from there did recommend mixed-use lane uses from mixed-use low all the way to mixed-use high. So it is right in line.
What spectrum on mixed use from the low to the high end of?
It's 100 feet to 200 feet frontages.
As to mixed use, however, for example, your, your urban core, your center of your city, the Ocean One project, that's a mixed-use category. This is extending from the tracks west to 95 to your lower intensity communities, the single-family communities. It's not your urban core. So to look for an urban core lot size in a more suburban part of your town isn't necessarily the best approach either. You know, you obviously, you want something in between. And I gave you 20 feet because Atlantic just happens to be a booming corridor. But it is more of a suburban corridor. It is, it doesn't have towering buildings. It doesn't have, you know, 10-story buildings. You know, I'm not suggesting that's the number, but I think to use the same number that you're using in your urban core for buildings that could be 15 stories tall just isn't rational. That just, the connection is too dramatic. So, in any event, I know you have a few weeks before you hear this. Again, I'd be happy to sit down with staff and help them with some of the other communities that I do business in, since I work in all of Broward and in Palm Beach County. But I just think that if your goal is redevelopment, this proposal, at least pieces of it, are not going to help you.
Ask another question. The church right here on the corner that sits almost in the road next to the sidewalk, would this have any barrier, I'm just saying, on East Boynton Beach Boulevard?
Well, so there is a clause inside the overlay that does state that nothing is going to be non-conforming. So if you are an existing property, you are not non-conforming. If there is a disaster, you can rebuild. This is primarily for new development and redevelopment areas. So it would not have any direct effects to anything on the ground right now.
All right, go back to what she said. If she wanted to build the Dunkin' Donut on the corner of Northwest 4th, we can give a waiver if we wanted to.
Well, that was in before these regulations were approved, and I'd have to look at the site plan again. I believe, I had thought that they met the frontage. I'm not sure that they met the area. But I'd have to look at the site plan again. The only thing that sticks out in my mind from the Dunkin' Donuts was the placement of the driveway, which does not meet the regulations of this ordinance. But again, they are already within, within the system. And one more point that, something that is added that we didn't talk about within these regulations is a waiver process, which you guys already have within the old overlays. And what that'll say is anything that the commission feels, if it's a major site plan, that the commission feels would not detrimentally affect the intent of the overlay, they can request a waiver from.
My comments are is that what Bonnie says, maybe 150 feet is a lot. But as for what we're trying to do here is create the corridor for mixed use. You know, my questions go to the coastal village. Is that a defined theme? Or is that an overall theme which would include Mediterranean?
Coastal village is only for the cultural district. It does not spill over into the Boynton Beach Boulevard.
Okay, so great.
It is only for those six blocks.
And then the next, does that, does coastal village include Mediterranean? I'm not an architect. I don't know what things include and what is. So coastal village is a defined theme within the architectural community?
It is, and it's more of what I, I think most people would relate to the Key West type of building. Mediterranean is a little bit more all-encompassing. We do have a lot of prominent Mediterranean architecture and historical architecture in the city, not that far east. There might be a couple of exceptions. But all that, we can iron out through public meetings once we move forward with the architectural review stuff.
Okay. The second one was that for the Boynton Beach overlay, we had an engineering plan done for Kembley Horn. Is that in compliance with what we're proposing? Or have you seen what the original thing that the CRA did, the first design?
Right. So the first design that they had done, and I would have to look at the plans again, but it was from Seacrest east to Federal Highway. I believe they're in the middle of redesigning that, that would be in compliance. The way these measurements are taken from the pedestrian zone are from back of curb. So the street trees are in compliance. I believe the sidewalk are in compliance. I would have to look at the measurements for the active area.
Okay, so that's...
And if it is not there, it would move into private property.
Okay. And then my, my personal question is, is that I have an R2 zoning within the Boynton Beach Boulevard zoning district. Am I allowed to build a house there? Or is that no longer allowed? Would I need to get a waiver, even though I'm not changing the zoning?
A brand-new house?
Well, either a brand-new house or a second house, because I am allowed in an R2 to have two homes.
Well, whatever you have there would be vested. A brand-new house, if you give me a second, I'll check. I don't know if we prohibited single-family homes or not.
Yeah, you know, I have a duplex capability on my property.
I mean, the duplex capability is a factor of several things, though. It would depend on lot size also, just because of the zoning that it is in. So I don't know. I would have to see if your lot is compatible. We are prohibiting on Boynton Beach Boulevard accessory dwelling units, single-family detached, and two-family duplex.
On Boynton Beach Boulevard?
For brand-new redevelopment.
So if I'm, but that's, so that me on Northeast 3rd Avenue would be included?
Yeah. Now, the only, I lost my train of thought, because that's not completely. Oh, yeah, okay. So the one aspect of this, which is not in this ordinance yet, is the idea of an interim period. And what we were looking to implement, again, it is not in this, but if it's something that the board is interested in, we can bring it back for a second reading, is an idea of if you're adding square footage to an existing use, you would be allowed to do so as a percentage of the overall building. And if you're making improvements to a building, you would be able to do that based on a cost of the overall building. So you might be able to do an addition or build another unit if your lot is applicable, but it would be restricted on the square footage based on your existing home.
Okay.
But again, that is not in there yet. So if that is something we're interested in, we can bring that back.
I think we'll talk about it in between.
Sure.
All right, great.
All right. My question is to staff. Can you all get with Ms. Miskel and her project on Northwest 4th and see what y'all could work out, you know, because that, that's affecting, you know, where I live. And I want to see something on that corner because it looks, it's just, looks, it's terrible. I'm just saying, you know, if y'all could work out something...
Absolutely. We're happy to work with Ms. Miskel always.
Yeah, just meet with her. I'm just saying, and tell me something, yay or nay.
Is there, has there been any thought to, to scaling down those requirements as the mixed-use intensity lessons towards 95? Had any thought been put into that? You know, that potentially might seem like a compromise where the farther you get away from the mixed-use high and the downtown, the transit area and all that, that it becomes more residential, as Bonnie had stated, you know, has that thought?
We have a link to it. We definitely can. The plan now recommends three different lane uses. So we can try and see if we can come up with a scheme that relates to the lane uses. We did do that with some of the parking standards, so staff can definitely look at that.
Okay, so for Ocean Avenue, what's the lot frontage on that with the historical or, right, what do we call that district?
I'm sorry?
Cultural overlay.
The cultural district.
Okay, what's the lot frontage on that?
I will double-check, just to make sure I'm coding correctly. Minimum lot frontage on, in the cultural district is 100 feet. Now, the lot frontage and lot area has some correlation to do with parking. We do have parking reductions within the cultural district, which wouldn't require as much space to park because there are public parking options. Whereas in Boynton Beach Boulevard, we do not. So that was one of the factors that we looked at in lot frontage and area also.
Oh, so based on what Ms. Miskel was saying, if we're trying to encourage more of a coastal and little mom-and-pop shops on Ocean, that would be where I would expect to see a smaller lot frontage on Ocean Ave compared to Boynton Beach Boulevard, which I would expect to see, I would be okay with a larger lot frontage there. Because from what I understand, when we spoke, we said we're trying to emulate something more along the lines of what Gateway Boulevard and PGA Boulevard, those, those types of corridors, that's what we're trying to emulate on Boynton Beach Boulevard. Am I correct?
Yes, you are. And if you look at Gateway, the lot frontage is actually really wide because it is developed as...
What is it? Can you, do you have a number?
I do not have a number. But, and I do not have a picture of it, but I can bring that back for you. But it is, it stretches at least 100, 200 feet because it is actually two plazas with parking behind it and then residential behind that. So the design is what made it look like it was smaller lots or smaller buildings, but the actual property is significant.
So what I'm trying to dispel is we're not trying to create little strip malls here along Boynton Beach Boulevard, right?
No.
So these lot frontages would actually prevent that? Or would they encourage?
They would encourage larger development.
Okay.
Going hand-in-hand with the mixed-use development and the vision that was proposed in the Boynton Beach District, it's encouraging you to be able to put residential, commercial, and be able to park in the same lot. Because we do not have public parking options right now on Boynton Beach Boulevard.
Final question for me. Mixed use on Boynton Beach Boulevard, will we have to buy individual properties to do some of this stuff y'all are saying that we will have to do?
You would not have to buy anything. A lot of this will happen incrementally. There are some parcels that are already under similar ownership.
We'll have discussions with you guys in between the first and the second reading, so.
Sure. Look forward to it.
No more public comment. We have a roll call on proposed ordinance number 17-015.
On a roll call, you want us to say we're going to approve it?
You want a motion first?
Yeah, that's the way you do it. Motion to approve.
Although, and may have a roll call now.
McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Aye.
Vote is four to zero.
May have a motion to for proposed ordinance number 17-016.
Mayor, let me read that one first. We didn't do that. We combined, so.
Thank you.
We need to go back and clean that up. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, amending chapter two and three to continue the implementation of the community redevelopment plan with the establishment of the new Boynton Beach Boulevard overlay zone, regulating site development standards, zoning uses and urban design standards, provided for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
May have a motion to approve.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. May have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vote is three to one.
Thank you.
City manager's report.
Colin Roth, Assistant City Manager. We just wanted to bring you up to date where we are as you, probably if you remember, we've been, over the last couple of years, talking to the town of Manalapan and the town of Hypoluxo about their water and sewer services. The town of Manalapan had come to us and asked us to serve their town. We looked into it. We gave them a proposal. They've decided to go on their own and do their own, which is fine. The town of Hypoluxo is in our service area, and we haven't entered a local agreement with them to serve the town, with the exception of about 500 customers that get water from Manalapan. Hypoluxo voted to terminate that contract and come in to the city, which is good for the customers because right now they get two bills, because we serve the same customers with sewer, and they get their water from Manalapan. So we just wanted to get you up to date that we're going to be negotiating with them a revision to the interlocal agreement that we have with Hypoluxo to provide those services to all their residents. And so we just wanted to get you up to date and see if you had any questions.
Untrackable expire in 2020?
That's correct.
Aye, anybody?
They have to wait, they have to have a two-year period that they have to start. So that's why we have to start now.
What are we looking at in regards to monetary coming from this guesstimation?
As with all of these projects that we look at from utilities, we do a financial analysis to make sure that current customers are not paying any cost for the acquisition of new customers. So the new customer base will pay for whatever acquisition costs are for those new customers.
What I'm saying, what do we expect to make from doing this?
Oh, to make? You know, that's a very good question. I can get those numbers to you when we get further on into negotiations. We don't have those yet because we haven't. We looked at Manalapan and Hypoluxo together, and we'd provided that. And it was, it was substantial over time. This one, of course, is just 500 customers, so it's going to be less. But it will pay for itself. There will not be any additional funds needed from utilities to pay for whatever work we're moving forward with to serve them.
Be so kind to get me the amount, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Is there something to approve?
No.
No, thank you. All right.
Appreciate the initiative, Vice Mayor.
Good idea.
Moving on to Commissioner Romulus, request approval for $1,000 for community support funds to be donated to the Women's Circle Building Fund for the new facility and expanded programs.
I leave approval. I approve. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. We do have Sister Lorraine, who bared with us throughout this entire meeting, if you would like to come up and just say a few words rather quickly about your project.
Thank you very much. We are in the process of expanding, and I can quickly...
Speak in front of the microphone, so there's a record of it, though. Okay.
Where we are presently located is on the south side, or as you're looking at it, it is the right side of the building. And that is 1,200 square feet. We are planning to move into the north side, starting next year. We want to be shovel-ready by the beginning of next year, and that will be over 4,000 square feet. So you are helping us with this expansion. I was just very much impressed with the presence of Commissioner Romulus that was, I believe it was the 10th of this month, when we were actually celebrating eight new U.S. citizens. Besides our usual program of assisting low-income women with our free services to help them get jobs, we also, because they've asked for it, we helped them prepare for the U.S. citizenship exam. So we had a marvelous celebration, and Commissioner Romulus came and just inspired these women. She stood there as a very professional, competent woman, and impressed these women by saying, "You can be anything you want to be. Look at me." She didn't quite say that, but just her presence said that. So it was a wonderful event, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sister Lorraine, for all the work you guys are doing. And, you know, just as a point of clarification for the public, everything that she does is all free of charge to the women that get to participate in these programs. So, you know, $1,000 is an understatement to what you really, really deserve for the work that you guys are doing in the community, but thank you so much.
Sister Lorraine, this will not affect the parking lot we dedicated, right?
Yes. We, the dedicated parking lot is complete. It's the most beautiful parking lot in all of Boynton Beach, and you were there.
What you're expanding would not affect the parking lot?
No, no. That's on the south side, and the new building will be on the north side.
Good, all right.
Motion to approve. Is there been a second? All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you so much.
Next, item B. Approve changing the date of the first meeting in September from Tuesday, September 5, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. to Thursday, September 7, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. to have first public budget hearing on proposed full-year 17-18 budget in accordance with the Truth and Milage calendar.
Motion to approve?
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion approved. Discuss and decide the signing authority for the periods of time that both the mayor and vice mayor are not available. Commissioner Romulus, would you like to have signing ability? Are you going to be here the next three weeks?
I, yeah, I'll be here.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Aye.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
You got three weeks, don't drop dead. I'm just kidding.
Discussion on removal of advisory board member for absence in the procedure to fill any vacancy.
I'll go ahead and start this off, because this was something that we already had in place, and I'm trying to find out what we had discussing it tonight. I'm just saying, if you missed X amount of meetings, you was removed, and then you was put up to be replaced. I'm just saying, did y'all do away with that, you know? Because we got something in place. This is what I'm saying.
That was the absence and attendance policy. However, the resolution that's attached to your agenda item, when the CRAAB board was created, indicates that the only way a member can be removed is by vote of the commission.
Okay. So then we need to establish if they missed X amount of meetings, then we could vote them out of office, off of the board.
So what I wanted to say is that I was reading the counties, and they say missed three consecutive meetings, or more than 50% of yearly meetings. Is that okay with the board, that they are automatically taken off the board?
All other advisory boards have four absences to constitute a removal?
And the question is, is that do we would, can we do this universally for all advisory boards?
You'd have one rule for all.
So is that something okay, following the county's lead?
You want to reduce the other boards from three to four, or from four to three absences as well?
Consecutive absences, or 60%, or more than 50%. So if there's 12 meetings, and they are there at five of them because of the time differences, then they would be automatically removed. And I would suggest that we do it per calendar year, starting in January. Or, go ahead.
Yeah, we already have something, this is what I'm trying to figure out. We already have something in place for the calendar year, something doing it for all advisory boards. Judy, what is on there? How many meetings can they miss consecutively? We already got something in place.
It doesn't indicate consecutively. It indicates three meetings during the year for the board. So like, the historic board was appointed in April, so their year is April to April. Most of the boards are December to December. But it's three meetings during that year, not consecutive meetings. That's what we have now. It's just three meetings missed. Then the fourth meeting, they're removed.
No, the fourth meeting, they're removed. Correct. So after...
Removed at our discretion, is what I'm understanding, because this is coming before us.
Coming before you, because the CRAAB board, the Crab Board, specifically says that they can only be removed, a member can only be removed by the commission. That's why I brought this back on, because that's different than the other boards.
I have no problem with this coming into accord with the existing, or if we want to modify the existing.
So what I want to say is that whatever we vote on tonight, is that it, that is what our new policy is going to be. And so if we want to say that it is still, if you miss three meetings per year, and that's it, so whether they're consecutive or the 50%, that's fine, and that's that. And so if we agree with that, then we would have a motion to remove Ms. Melly from the Crab Board.
Just to clarify, sorry. It says, just in the information, the attendance policy for all advisory boards indicates four absences constitute removal. So are we, that was, my question was, are we, if we choose to reduce it to three, I have no problem with that, just to take note that unless I'm wrong or the information's wrong currently, it says four absences?
No, I believe it's clear. It's three absences, and they're put on probation. If they miss a fourth, then they're gone.
That's correct.
So that's why this is, the conversation is happening right now.
Right. It's three, and then they're sent a letter, and if they miss the fourth, then they're off. And there are no excuses. You should keep that in mind, too. There's no viable excuse.
There was no communication with, from this board member, with the city or the CRA?
And so the issue is, is that if there is no...
That was a question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That was a question. There was no communication with the city or the CRA from this board member?
None.
Regarding her absences?
None.
Okay.
All right. Open it up to public comment.
Thank you. David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. Since it did come up that you're talking about one person in particular, I found it really funny that she was even appointed to that board at the time, because when she ran for office in 2014, she referred to the area north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, which is essentially mostly the CRA area, as an urban Chernobyl. And somebody who felt that way about that area to be on the board that's going to discuss things, you know, I found it a little bit interesting. Also, I had the pleasure of serving with her on the Charter Review Committee back in We had six meetings. The first meeting, Ms. Melly was present. The second meeting, she was late. The third meeting, she was late. The fourth meeting, she was present. The last two, she was absent. This is not a person who is committed to the appointments that are afforded her. If I could just digress for a second on something which has nothing to do with this, that sort of same church, different pew. When there's an opening to the P&amp;D Board, I have an interest, being on the board and being the chair. And I noticed that one of the applicants was somebody who had a business in the city, but didn't live in the city. And I contacted Judy, and she informed me that if you have a business in the city, you can be on the P&amp;D Board. And I think that's something I'd appreciate, well, as a citizen, that you would address that that not be allowed, because somebody who's going to vote on what's going to go on within our city and not even live in the city should not be on a quasi-judicial board like the P&amp;D Board. So I wish you would, if in fact that is the case, like Judy informed me, to change that, to rework the ordinance that governs the P&amp;D Board. Thank you.
I guess we can add that topic of discussion when we bring up all those other boards later on. This decision has nothing to do with that comment, these, those comments that we just made earlier by that previous resident, but I simply just believe if we have ordinances or rules in place, we should follow them, especially if the individual chose not to even acknowledge the fact that, you know, she was on probation and that there are certain rules that we have to follow. So I don't, I don't think this is any preference or any, you know, choosing favorites or anything. This is simply just following the rules. And if we're doing that, then I believe that we're within our grounds to terminate her appointment.
So from what I got moving forward is that we are going to continue the policy, except it's automatic termination for the Crab Board and all the other boards, that they receive a letter noting that they will be terminated after three absences per calendar year, and at the fourth, it would be automatic. And so because of that, not in the language within the resolution of the Crab Board, request a motion to terminate Paula Melly from the Crab Board.
Before, I'm sorry, before we do that, can we just go ahead and add the language to the Crab Board now to reflect the same policy that is for all the other boards to just apply all across the board? That way, all advisory boards in this city have a three-absence rule. They miss the fourth, they're out. That way, there's not, this doesn't have to keep coming back to us if there are other people that fall within this category.
I kind of would request that the staff, you know, brings up the current resolution or ordinance that we need to do to get that in effect.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's been, is there a second? All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Sing none. Motion is approved.
Just a point of clarification, because I'm just confused. So again, it's if you're absent three times, and you don't show up to the fourth meeting, you're automatically removed. So it's four absences removes you.
Correct.
Three absences gets you a warning.
It should mention that there is an ordinance that also says that if you're taken off of a board for absences, because of your absences, you can't get on another board for three years.
Right.
I do try to call the people when they don't show up to find out why they're not showing up, or, you know, could they, would they rather resign than to have me remove them for absences? I do try to make contact with the people to get that one last chance in there to... Volunteers are hard to come by. I hate to discourage them.
Right. And so regarding that statement, you did these actions with this individual?
I did not speak with Paula Melly. I sent her the letter, and she did not respond to me whatsoever.
Wasn't interested.
No.
All right. Moving on to legal.
Okay, ordinance 17-017. First reading, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing abandonment of an existing 12-foot-wide utility easement within the former Roselle Landscape Nursery parcel located on Flavor Pick Road west of Military Trail, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Clarify, this is land that we're acquiring or we are giving away?
Abandoning. Abandoning.
So we're giving it away to...
We're not giving it, well, we're not technically giving it to anybody. By abandoning the easement, the interest in the easement falls to the property owners on either side of it.
Okay. Motion to approve.
All those, do we need to open it up to public comment? Sing none. All those in favor states we need a roll call.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is four to zero.
Ordinance 17-018. An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing abandonment of the existing utility easement rights within a residential access roadway track R5 located within the Flavor Pick Town Homes Platt, recorded in Platt Book 121, page 193 to 201, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Open up to public comment.
Question to staff. This is not a utility easement under there? Anybody? Hello?
Colin Groff. No, there's no utilities under there. These are easements that were given by the developer earlier, and now we don't need them. That's why we're recommending abandoning them.